Okay, with the hour being after seven, we'll start the meeting. The complete board first is minutes of January fifteenth, on June fifteenth. Motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Second?
Second.
So, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain, because I wasn't there. Correct. All right, re-ork. Next item up?
Um, I think our structure has worked well, and I would like to make a motion to have Jack stay as chairman.
All right, do I get a second?
Second.
You have a second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next vice? Anybody want? Who was vice before?
Me.
John, all right, that's what I keep forgetting. Can't see anymore, I used to be able to see you a lot.
I make a motion to keep John as vice.
Okay, I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And last will be clerk, Phil, right? Oh, Katie was clerk.
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a motion for Katie? Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from John, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, ready to rock and roll. First item up, we have a discussion on three ninety-seven Elm.
I spread out a little too much tonight.
All right, for everybody here, just understand, it's only a discussion plan, so there's no votes, there's no notifications, there's no nothing, it's just that the applicant wanted, if he want to come in and show us what they want to do, and they just pick our brand, so.
Having never presented here in Wapole before, I just wanted to know what might be the best place to set a plan that people can see it? Just here?
Center down?
(laughing).
You asked. No, it's only for us.
Yes, so just-
As long as we can see it, we also got plans here, so don't worry about it.
Maybe it's better on this side, this side.
But what you can do is, so the camera, because when people watch at home, I don't, can you hit that? I don't know if you can. Tilt it this way, no, toward, the other way, towards, towards us, yeah, they can kind of see it, okay.
All right, okay. Thank you, and thank you for making this time available for us tonight. For the record, my name's Tom DePlacido, DePlacido Development Corp., and with me here tonight is Rick Gudrow of United Consultants of Rentham. And what we're here is just to have an open discussion about the development of the land at three ninety-seven Elm Street. That's a parcel of property that's actually between Turner Pond and the school on Route twenty-seven, heading towards Medfield. We have that property under purchase and sale, and we've actually met with town officials, had some multiple discussions, the type of development there, and development concepts, and we concluded that the most attractive type of development would just be a three-lot subdivision with some upscale homes that would be overlooking Turner Pond. During these discussions, it was communicated to us and brought to our attention that there was a strip of land that was part of this property that went behind the school and prevented access to a pretty vast-sized piece of land that the town of Wapole controls and owns, and it was asked that if there was a way that we could find to, to convey that property to the town of Wapole, it would be appreciated, so that they could have direct access from the school to that property. So, Rick worked hard, put our, put our thinking caps on, and we, we can develop this property with a conventional three-lot subdivision. It's very tight on area, and Rick will go over that with you. We can do it as a conventional three-lot subdivision, however, that does not allow us to be able to grant that property to the town. So, what we wanted to do here tonight was to present two options to the planning board to look at. One is a conventional three-lot subdivision, and the other plan is a three-lot subdivision with waivers that would allow the area to be granted to the town of Wapole behind the school to, to get access to that property. Just would look to actually see, you know, the board's thoughts with this, so, and maybe help to guide us which way, you know, the board would like us to, to move forward with developing this property. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Rick Gudrow, just so he can walk you through the plans, and we're hoping to get some input from everybody after that.
Thank you. Rick Gudrow with United Consultants, as Tom had mentioned. The plan that's available for view would be a conventional subdivision plan, would contain a cul-de-sac roadway with sidewalk proposed on one side to provide access for the, for the three lots. As Tom had mentioned, there is a strip of land that extends out behind the school, and it ties into property of this matchline area here. That was the property question. What we're proposing with this development scheme is a common driveway with a minimum eighty thousand square foot lots to provide for septic systems to be installed on the lots. We have provided you with a roadway profile on sheet two of the plan set, to give a general idea of the biography of the site, and what the road would look like, and what cuts we would propose to provide for that roadway. The preferred development scheme would be to request waivers, which we provided at the top, the top left of the plan sheet, nine total waivers, and those basically would be for the construction of a reduced width right-of-way, reduced pavement width, minimizing a turnaround area that we worked with the fire department to finalize, so that they would be able to turn emergency vehicles up into the development, and then that would allow for common driveways to utilize connection into the three lots, and that would then allow for portion of that back area to be excess land, and we would still have the eighty thousand square foot lot requirements. As I mentioned, we had provided a list of nine waivers to do this. The applicant would be proposing to keep the roadway private, just to confirm that. And I can go through the waiver requests, I'm not sure if the bullets read them. Whatever your preference, Mr. Chairman?
No, we don't need the waivers, because we got to cover a few other things on this. Okay, first off, I looked, I couldn't figure out what that piece on the back was, I thought maybe your pen went like that one day, I guess, it looks like a spike.
It looks like a spike.
Yeah, I had no idea, you know, looking at it, and when I saw that, I couldn't figure it out, you go to our GIS, you go everything, it doesn't appear anywhere. Matter of fact, even the square footage under Roger Turner's house, so, doesn't, is, doesn't match with that added to it, you understand, right?
Yes.
So, I heard that you guys have a deed for that or somewhere, you found it?
Yes.
All right, so, you know, when you come in front of us, you're going to have to show us all that.
Sure.
Okay, yeah, I think you know that. The other thing is, to understand about waivers and plans, is, if you want a waiver, you first have to show us you can do it, and then we go, eh, a lot of people come in here and says, oh, I want a waiver, and I want thirty feet, whoa, no, 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 that's not a waiver. You got to show us you can do it at forty-six, then if we think thirty's better. More importantly, typically, it's been waivers on sidewalks on both sides, changing the curbs, stuff like that. But as far as dimensional waivers, we, we don't give those. And the one that pops out at me is on your non-wavered plan with the conceptual, it doesn't appear that you can get, well, I don't even see any of the circles in any of these lots, you understand a lot of circles, right?
Yes.
I don't see them on the conventional, I see them on your waivered plan, but I don't necessarily see them on your conventional. Can you get them in? Oh, you can. How come mine doesn't show that?
Yeah, mine doesn't either.
He's standing out a little more in color, I believe.
Well, you want to see, it's black and white. That's what we got.
Yeah.
That's what we got.
See the circle here?
Yeah, but like I said, yeah.
It's black and white, it stands out much better in color, I agree.
No, but, well, I'm just saying, we all have the plan that doesn't show it.
This is the, this is the conventional plan.
Concept plan that says for us.
Correct. So, one circle's right here.
Yeah, I, but like I've said, when you sent it to us, we couldn't see anything. Yeah, you want to see this? I'm like, Mr. Circles?
Yep, that's probably a function of PDF scanning and printing. I apologize.
Okay, well, that was one that jumped out, because you had them nice on the other one. Other than those two things that came to me quickly, as far as any land deals, that's down the hall with the selectmen. We don't control that at all, so, however you want to do it. What's interesting is, town rules right through that anyway, don't they? With the school.
What, I'm sorry?
They go right through the Turner land anyway, or the Madden land, I should say, right?
They actually-
Yeah, they, they don't even know that exists.
There's actually a trail from the school through the back portion of the Turner slash Madden land.
I live not too far from my kids and all that, but I'm saying, I didn't even know that, so they just put the trail in, so, as far as that, my, those are my only two comments. So long as you, in my opinion, if you're waivers, you can do it.
Mm-hmm.
Just a matter, you don't necessarily want to, if that makes sense. You can't be, I don't want to do it because I can't.
Correct.
I want a waiver, oh, good, at least you're one of the first guys that understands that with us, thank you. All right, I, do you want, anyone want to go first, or you want to go to Kyle?
Mr. Chair, I took a look at it for the basic, you know, the road width, the width of the cul-de-sac, the pavement, all that, it seems to appear, the roundings, all those components, and the version I have is a little clearer on, on the zoning circles, so, the basics seem to be there. So it essentially looks like it's a conforming plan, there's not a lot of detail to help you out, but it looks like a conforming plan.
So you don't see any issues?
No.
John, any questions, comments?
I see how you can do it on the concept plan, and then on the waivered plan, only on the waivered plan do you show the parcel A. Now, is that because the difference in size of the road, proposed roadway is such that you can't do the same with the conception, the basic?
Correct.
Non-wavered plan?
The reduction in the roadway right-of-way area allows for the parcel A to be created on the, on the preferred plan, if you will.
Looking at the waivers, the two that stand out as no-gos, kind of, is the, the very thing that allows you to do that, the width of the roads, the width of the roadways, because the fire department's not going to let you get eighteen feet wide pavement, they're going to want more than that. I'm kind of leery about allowing, allowing any reduction from the forty-six-foot width. I'm not sure how much you can tweak this to still allow, giving the school something. Obviously, it's narrower down that end, whether you can bring the parcel line up more, so you can still increase the waivered land roadway, and still allow something given to the town. That'd be my optimal idea anyways. That's it for the moment, yeah.
So, so actually, the houses would not be built in the, in the circles, that you're actually looking to build the houses further into the property?
Correct.
And so you have the, these long, long property boundaries to make that work?
Correct. Yeah, the idea would be to have the houses overlooking the pond.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so, I really, I understand exactly why you're doing it, it looks just a little convoluted, but that's probably not, not exceptional, but it does look a little convoluted to make, make this, the area work out.
If I'm staying the mowing the lawn, I'll be interested.
Yeah. You all set, Phil?
I'm set, yeah.
Kate?
Can you give me an approximate, how far in, how long is it from the street entrance to the elbow on that last?
So, from here to here, about two hundred and fifty feet, let's say it's probably six, seven hundred feet to that last elbow here, is this where you're targeting?
So I just warn you, we have a dead-end rule that I think we committed to play?
Not for drafts.
No? But even though it's the only way in?
Nope.
Nope.
Only for roads.
Right, but it's a waiver to make there?
No, no, it's a road, but-
Okay. I think you'd be okay anyways, because it's seven fifty.
But you're going down, you're going down the path, Kate.
Mr. Chairman?
You're going to get, one sec, Kyle. I don't care how you get to your house, I don't care if you have to fly, that's not up to us, we're zoning, I mean, we're the subdivision that rules the rights, fire department's going to be the one.
Mm-hmm.
And I guarantee you, you're going to have to put a cul-de-sac at the last house there, because if they want to service it, they're not going to back out, they're going to, and the other thing I would recommend, I don't mean to step on you, Kate-
No, go right in.
Is, I would look at any other waivered plan for something that's done like this for the roadway construction, typically twenty feet, they want twenty feet, so if there's a bunch in town, and when you talk to the colleague and give you, so rather than reinventing the wheel going down there, no, go fish, here's what he's approved in the past. And that, you, I would talk to them, that's a big thing with fire department, is, they're going to need something at the end, so they can make sure they can turn around. That's, for us, everything else is pretty simple, but it'd be the wonder in the future.
Yeah, that, that's certainly our next step, is to work with the fire department and the town engineer to come up with a, a plan that can be moved forward, but this was more for discussionary purposes.
Yeah, but, but when you come back and you're all mad, because the fire department's killing you, I don't-
Wouldn't be the first time.
I know, but I like to do things once.
I agree. I agree.
That's why I was having a draft, because I burned it in the first time. Okay, sorry, Kate, go ahead.
That's it.
Okay.
And that, that's what I was getting at, is the fire department and the length and-
Mm, oh, that's a great comment, thank you.
Uh, one more question, maybe?
Well, Paul's got one first, John.
Any special considerations for the pond, for the land, for drainage or anything like that, you know?
That comes under, they got to go through CONCOM-
Okay.
And stormwater management.
So that's not even us, okay. So other than that, Jack, no, no other, no other-
We have, we have received an ANORAD from the Conservation Commission, they have confirmed the wetland boundaries on the site. We've had, had, have had discussions with the town engineer about some stormwater concepts, and that, you know, would be the next, one of the next things to do. Fire department certainly would be consideration, and then testing for stormwater.
Okay, uh, okay, I'll go back, Kyle, you have a question?
Yeah, just quickly, Mr. Chair, to answer Katie's questions, it's, it's less than seven hundred from the street to the elbow, and, and to follow up on the drainage, the applicant was going to check the soils out, do some testing, and invite us along late January, and, and the soils are good, and the groundwater is fairly deep and whatnot. So the stormwater management has all the ingredients to, to be successfully done.
Okay, John?
Um, looking at the common driveway, um, you have to get easements from lot to lot, allowing them to cross over?
Yes. And you have to get a special permit for that, too. Correct.
Which, if you do file, continue on, my advice would be you file simultaneously, so that we don't need to be doing common driveway, one way, and this the next. You do, put them together, makes more sense, because you're going to evaluate the whole thing at once anyway.
Absolutely.
Um, the other, one last question I have is, does this fall under the Rivers Act at all?
Yes, yes.
Are they calling the pond a river, or they calling it a, a pond with a river, or how are they determining that?
Sure.
Just my own curiosity.
So this portion was a river-
Yep.
And then across the street is a river.
Okay.
So that creates a river for an area.
Yep.
The pond itself is just bordering vegetated weather for the bank at what point?
So they've already said that that's not a river, then?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just curious. I was wondering if they went down the middle where the river used to run before, they dug it all out, but, okay. Anyone else have any questions, Phil?
Yeah, one other question, so, for the common driveway, then would you be making it, having an agreement then in place with the, with the three homeowners for, you know, maintenance and snowplowing?
Snowplowing, maintenance, absolutely. And, and if we went with the private road, it would carry on to that as well?
Yeah.
So that there'd be no responsibility by the town?
Okay, that's an interesting point. You, you'd have to do a full build-out, oh, I'm sorry, no, you don't, it's a driveway, but you'll never get, if you want to do driveways like this, this will never be public, so you're going to have to do what Phil is just alluding to, you're going to have to do a common driveway and all that stuff that goes with it, but I think you knew that anyway, right?
I think, you know, the concept would be a homeowners' association, that would have responsibilities of both the roadway and the common driveway and the stormwater system.
Okay. Uh, stormwaters, Kyle, if this, oh, I'm sorry, why do, so you might consider making this private, the, the road end?
Yes.
All right, so then, then we don't care, then everything's under your homeowners', okay?
Correct.
If you, when you start talking about drainage, if you left that public, eh, we'd have a problem. But you, you don't want to build it out full either.
No, correct, if we're going to, you know, go with the waivered plan or some version thereof-
Yeah, I understand what you want to do.
We would keep it private.
So that makes, yeah, we're out of the, the game on this.
The town is, yes.
Okay.
And would you, for electrical access, would you do underground electrical cable, or would you do poles on the-
Underground? Yeah, underground.
I understand, and that's all that you do now anyway, right? No more poles?
Except in Norwood.
Because they own the poles.
They want poles.
Yeah, because that's their light department, because their guys don't like going digging.
Yes.
But that's good.
They're set up to, they're set up to do overhead.
Yeah, so when they're dealing with the municipal electrics, that's all they want. Okay, all right.
Jack, do you know where common driveways are?
It's section ten. They're at the max, three.
Yeah, but isn't there a length requirement?
No.
Three hundred feet to the split.
What it is, is they have something that beyond, we, it's like three hundred feet, so you can't go much more than three hundred feet and split off. So if these were seven hundred feet and then they split, that wouldn't be allowed, it's in there, how far?
It's three hundred feet to the last split.
To the last split, okay.
Okay, yeah, so, looking at that, it could be, it looks kind of like it's over three hundred, actually.
It's two hundred and ninety-nine.
Okay.
It will be, John, all-
It will be. No, we, you know, we looked at that, we obviously were aware of it, but thank you for pointing it out.
All right, um, yeah, well set, so it sounds like you guys got some dealings with on the town side, right?
Yes.
You know, put up a fence so they can't use the trail?
You can also get a home.
So, all right, thank you.
We hope not.
All right, so that was-
Thank you.
Can I have the stuff back, Jim?
Excuse me?
Can I have all the stuff back?
The what?
The plans that I gave you.
I didn't even open them. Katie has it.
No, you have mine on the side.
My plan? Oh, these, oh.
If we do this one at the same time, we're going to be controversial for Kearsage.
All right. That's it. All right, take up a bond, we have a request for bond reduction, or bond set, forgotten pass, and they, Kyle has it, and the amount of-
Three fifty-seven, Mr. Chair.
Three hundred and fifty-seven, four-four-nine, and this is for the six-lot subdivision off of Washington Street. I'll make a motion to set it in an amount of three hundred and-
Mr. Chair, in the letter, I rounded it to three fifty-seven thousand.
Yeah, rounded down, huh?
Three fifty-eight.
What do you want, John? You want three fifty-eight?
I'd say go higher, yeah.
Okay, make a, make a motion to bond it at three hundred and fifty-eight thousand?
Second.
We have a second from Phil, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so it's all set, and get ready for your bond, Phil.
I, I am, um-
Not now.
I have, that was fine, but I have a tripartite for three seventy.
Yeah, well-
Which, if the board was so inclined, we could execute tonight.
Okay, well-
If not, I'll be back next week, or, excuse me, next month with three fifty-eight.
That's fine, because, Phil, if this had been something in the past, we've done an error, we helped, but I, my feeling is, I don't like, I'm tired of people pushing me, and I see what goes around town never gets done, and this has been sitting for quite a while, and this is a little bit out of order, so presumptuous, I think, would be the term, at least for me.
That's fair, but most people don't round up on top of the rounding up. That's why I'm asking.
Oh, whoa, 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 rounding up? Kyle was at three fifty-seven, four-four-nine.
Right.
He rounded down.
No, he, yeah, but he's saying three seventy.
Right.
No, I know, but John wanted three fifty-eight.
So you went to three fifty-eight, I'm offering you twelve thousand more.
But we already voted for three fifty-eight.
That's fine.
But, all right.
See you in a month. Would you please put me on the agenda for your next meeting?
All right, Phil. All right, all set?
Thank you very much.
You, you want to redo the tripartite, I suppose?
Yes, it will be three fifty-eight.
Maybe we'll change it on you.
And we will be here.
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right, we ready to rock and roll for the next one? All right, all right, count all the folders, okay.
Jack, this has not been opened yet.
Yeah, I know.
Did I have to recount on this? I'm sorry, did they recount on this?
It's not required to be, only notice it's not what it's on. Okay, with the hour being after seven-ten, we have a request from Kearsage LLC, thirteen Soldiersville Road, Boston. We suspect property owned by Norfolk County, six fourteen High Street, Dedham. Said property is located thirteen seventy-seven North Street, and it's map five parcels thirty-three, thirty-five, thirty-six, the district is rural. The applicant is seeking under site plan review, section thirteen of the zoning bylaws, to allow a development of a five-megawatt AC solar photovoltaic array and battery energy storage systems. Project proposes mine, minor land development, regrading, stormwater, proposed infiltration basis as shown on the plan, dated January twenty-seventh, two thousand and thirteen. Okay, with that being said, the hearing is open, but before we start, there's a lot of people here tonight that have probably never been to a meeting like this, or don't understand how to process. What happens is, the applicant has asked for site plan for solar farm up on, up in North Street, and what, the way it'll go is, we will let them present, and then, once he presents, I'll read any of the comments from the, what do you call it, the-
Other boards.
Other boards, and anybody else who might have a comment, and everybody will get a chance to speak at the end, but I, that's why I ask you, hold your questions to the end, because you may find questions that already been answered, and that's the way we like to handle it. Now, what I need to do- Now, what I need to do, because, eh, we know this is a little bit different, in that there's a lot of interest, and a lot of people don't understand it, so I will summarize it first, what we have in front of us. Want to take a nap? I mean, it's, it's only this much. All right, what we have here is Norfolk Aggie wants to build a solar farm up on North Street. We know that, they wanted to do it before. Kearsage is the developer, and from what the findings are, Kearsage is to pay the county 198,000 bucks a year for rent for this. From what their stuff they submitted, that I always questioned, this was bid out, and, but the other question I wondered is, how could this, this is now, I'm getting ahead of myself, so what happened, in our town zoning, this is not allowed in the rural district, it's not allowed in any residential. What happened some time ago, they went to the building inspector, wanted a building permit. Building inspector denied because based upon, it's not allowed use, and he denied it. That was appealed to the building, I mean, the zoning board, zoning board said the same thing. They turned him down. What was interesting about that is, my own opinion, but I'm not a lawyer, I'll be told that, is, I think they're within their rights, because now in front of us to get a site plan. Typically, you can't get a building permit till you get a site plan, but that's a matter of course. Now, they're here for us, because they've been, this went to land court. Judge says, back to us, okay? And what, in their land court findings, the judge said, solar is part of the Dover Amendment. Now, I'll explain Dover Amendment if anybody cares, but the Dover Amendment basically came out in the 60s, when Dover wouldn't allow churches in there. So what they did is, they said, all right, there's certain exemptions, churches being one, daycares are now another, but what's interesting is, public schools are not, they're not even part of anything. You can build them anywhere, do anything. So that was one of them. The second thing is, they said Walpole had little area for solar, we have like 2%. The other one they cited, might be interesting to anybody here, is the fact that they recited this case, Tracer Lane versus Town of Waltham. What happened is, Tracer Lane Realty wanted to build a solar farm in Lexington, nine-and-a-half acres. The only way they get there is through Waltham, so they wanted to put a road. They're putting a road to residential, and Waltham, and I agree with them, you can't put a, this is for commercial use, it's to residential, that's not allowed in this state. Somehow, they said, no, you can do it, but they kept citing that. I don't see the connection, but I'm not the judge, okay? It also said in there that the, that the school has solar panels on their school, most of them do, but let's remember, this is a solar farm, operate as a solar farm, where everything else is an accessory use, so that's allowed, all right? Now, based upon the case, given back to us, it says it means it's educational, because there is something, they're gonna give a course or something, Kearsage to the Aggie, is that correct?
It's been incorporated into the curriculum, different elements from the project.
Okay, so you've done that, okay. The other thing I, is, the land doesn't have to be contiguous. So, you know, it's two, a mile and a half away, so it doesn't have to be contiguous. I still think the building inspector is right. If I go onto the 2%, that's a little, that number, I only say it here because it's near and dear to my heart. We had something come out years ago, it said, we have the most commercial development land inside of 495 in anybody. Well, that's good, if you just go like this, but if you don't take the wetlands in consideration, knock it down by about three-quarters. So my point is, to say we only have 2%, 2% of the land area usable, we probably got about 8%, so that's a little bit, I wanna get that out. My opinion is that, oh, on the Dover Amendment, like I said, it seems a little off, all right? Tracer seems a little off, too. Court put us in this, okay? Court put it back at us, all right? Now, what's interesting about it is, the whole court case, at least I found out at it, originally when this came, I didn't have all the court documents to see what was behind it, is, I was gonna ask, why are you here? Why are you here? Can you answer? I'm not putting you on the spot, but...
Sure. I invited our attorney to also speak about the process, but we're here to do with solar as a right, assuming under what the land court has said, that we win the case.
Okay, but, it's a loaded question, okay? Why, okay, if you go by the way this is supposed to work, you didn't need to be here.
I think it's...
You don't, we never, I pushed on the school up at Bird, and I got knocked out by my little building committee, but every other project we're done with school, we've done a site plan, only just for the neighbors to understand, as our own information. Per Master General laws, zoning, that, you don't have to come to us to site plan. Now, why you are here, I didn't understand till I read what the judge said. Said you're gonna come to us, so judge didn't do you any favors on that one.
I'm...
I don't have any fun in land court, so I'm not worried about the judge, anyway, but when I read that, it's, now I know why you're here. That was very unusual. If he had never said that, we wouldn't even seen ya, so, all right, so...
I'm sorry.
No, you should be talking to that guy in Boston or Dedham where it happened. So, that was very, like I said, it was, why are you here? And then I read that, and I was like, whoa, okay. Now, the issue, okay, what I wanted to bring up is, you guys wanna build it for revenue, correct? 198 grand? Eh, to me, on a big Aggie, Norfolk County, it's not a lot of money, but you have a right to do it. My question is, there are other viable that I will throw out tonight, and I wanna ask you guys what you think of it, 'cause this is probably a benefit to all of us. There's a particular piece of property right now that's sitting vacant, 2405 Main Street. Anybody familiar with that? Mr. Buckley, who signed the app, you should know where that is, right?
2405? Is it Old Town Road?
What?
Is it Old Town Road? It's 2405.
Last, last one on the right before you get to Norfolk.
Okay.
What's that?
Prison.
Yes, prison is shut, isn't it?
That's correct.
Okay, right now, the prison is shut with no site of ever reopening or anything to do with it. And if you look at it real quick, half in Norfolk, half in Walpole, it's about 22 acres. You look on Google, but from everybody knows it, it's wide open. You guys don't have a cut of tree, you don't have to do anything. Put 'em on the buildings, put 'em on here, put 'em on there. I know all here from our reps, 'cause they sent it to the finance committee one night. Well, they may need it for overflow. No, once you shut something down, you can't reopen it, costs you thousands. So my point is, wouldn't it be better for you guys to approach the state, to say, can we go up there? Make a deal with Ms. Healy for a buck? I think it would be, it would get more grain, you could keep your farmland, and it would repurpose the prison. And you could probably expand more than you want. I, you know, if you're looking for more bucks, there's a place to do it. I don't know, you're at 198,000, but I'm sure you and, I don't, you guys at Kearsage, but it's probably worth more. Think about almost 72, 55 acres up there, just flat. If you've ever been up the prison, you know what a prison is. Inside, you can do, outside. I'm bringing that only because this has just been closed, and it makes a lot of sense, and then also, what the, what this intent was of solar farm is to repurpose different lands. Originally, it was old dump sites, this and that, not to knock down trees and farms and all that. So to me, I see something that helps you guys, that you can do something for less, and probably get more. It helps the town, 'cause we don't have to take the most beautiful spot in town down, and it, it repurposes it for the state, and it's a win-win for the governor and that, if we're doing something with it. I throw that out, is, as something. You know, I know you had the rights to do it, but I think not looking into it would be, unless you guys already know something, you wanna tell me about this? Or am I just blowing smoke, and it's not a chance?
Well, um, you go ahead. Mr. Chair, nice to be here. Bill Buckley, up on the go. I was gonna get out of Non-Street this evening. William Buckley, Assistant Director of Norfolk County, Walpole resident, 11 Cobb Terrace. I'm on a bunch of boards here in town, as you may or may not know. To be clear, you know, we're not gonna, the county was not gonna speak this evening, we were gonna let our lessee speak, but we are not in possession of any other land outside of the parcels we own at the Aggie and the Hilltop former prison farm on the Westwood border, so I can't speak to dealing with the state and purchasing other property. I can't tell you, we just sold Quincy District Court to the Commonwealth after about three years of negotiations, so I don't know how viable that would be, but we are operating under the parcels of land that are within the county portfolio currently.
So, if I understand you, Phil, very succinctly, is no?
Yes.
It's no, it's like, we're not gonna do it, we don't care. You have, I give an opportunity, and just gonna shut it out, because we want our football, and we're gonna take it?
Again, through you, Mr. Chair, respectfully, we would say we have, we feel we have the right to do this, and...
Never said you never write, but remember this?
I understand.
It's not gonna really get me going, is the fact that you guys are a public servant to the whole community. I give you a viable option, the whole community to love, and you guys said, no, I'm gonna do it my way.
I, I can't speculate about a...
And what gets me even worse, Phil, you don't even wanna look into it.
Through you, Mr. Chair, respectfully, I appreciate your consideration, but again, we've been working on this project for seven years now, so we're pretty far afield. So, with that, I'd be happy to...
You know, if this was the real world of a private developer, he'd be jumping all over this.
Okay.
But, so you're speaking for the entire county commissioners and everything, that, no, we're not looking anywhere else, we're done, we want this, that's all we want?
Through you, Mr. Chair, respectfully, I'm just here to support our lessee in his site plan review application. I can't speak to what the county in current or future times will or will not examine, but you asked a question, I happen to answer to the best of my ability this evening.
Okay, just to let it be known for the public record, that there are solar panels on Bay State in the Norfolk side.
Excellent.
So this isn't the first time. All right, beautiful. So we're gonna have a prison that's gonna sit there like Midfield, like Conville, like Foxborough, until it rots and falls, but...
Again, it is owned by the Commonwealth.
Cut down trees and farmland.
Not the county.
Yeah, I know, I understand. Something about, it's one thing, it's funny, Bill, that I'm really going off here, is I, you know, I had the condo at 420 Main abutting, and I never had so many problems with the Aggie. They've never been cooperative in anything. I used to get chased out when I was playing my kids with the baseball, and that was their field, that was actually the town's field. We owned part of that in there, they parked during their thing. Think I got anything? No, I got chased, so. My deals with the Aggie has never been that nice, and now we got the county commissioners saying, so, okay, well...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we're gonna be, just as long as you guys do the plan right, so...
All right.
Thank you for all that wonderful help, all right? So, now you get to go.
Okay. Andrew Bernstein from Kearsage Energy. We've done north of about 60 solar projects, and we do our best to try to work with the community and the restraints that are part of it. One of the most important things that I think, Mr. Chairman, you were bringing up, is the viability of a site, so we have to look at, can we interconnect to the utility? And some of the other issues, can we get in the right program? And when we started this seven years ago, we looked at all the different options that were out there, and we ended up focusing on North Street as part of it, as well as some of the other sites. So, what we're gonna try to do tonight is very succinctly sum up where we stand, our understanding from the legal process, and we'll give just a couple slides on what the project is, and then I'm gonna ask my colleague from Weston and Sampson, who put together all the plans, to say how we're following the ordinances. So the first slide will just come up and just discuss where we are from the legal status, from our understanding of what needs to be done, answering maybe some of your questions, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Kathleen Hire, I'm an attorney with Pierce Atwood, and I represent Kearsage. And I frankly feel a little superfluous after the really good summary that you gave, Mr. Chairman, so I'm gonna skip over some of my planned points, because you already covered them.
Can, can I just ask you this?
Of course.
Can you agree with me that the judge kinda like, oops?
Um...
Oh, you can tell me later, not in front of everybody.
Yeah, maybe we can talk...
I understand how that goes. Someday, you may be in front of them, yeah, okay.
As, correct, we were here because the judge issued a decision finding that the Walpole solar overlay district was invalid, because it didn't comply with the Dover Amendment, which does provide additional protections for large-scale ground-mounted solar, as the legislature has deemed that a necessary use moving forward to help the Commonwealth meet its renewable energy goals. In the judge's decision, he directed us to come back to the town and to apply for site plan review and any other permits that we require that are precursors to a building permit. So we filed this application, and our understanding is, after the judge's decision, this site plan application, the use is to be treated as of right, notwithstanding that it originally wasn't allowed in the zoning district, and that because it is an as-of-right use and also protected Dover use, the board's review is more related to regulation as opposed to absolute prohibition, and that we're looking at conditions and other items that the board will want to consider and look at in terms of public health, safety, and welfare.
Can I rudely interrupt you and ask a question?
Of course.
So, you're still in court, am I correct?
We are still in court. Both sides appealed the judge's decision. The town appealed with respect to the decision on the solar overlay bylaw, and the county and Kearsage cross-appealed on the educational and essential government function arguments, and that's more, more in terms of fleshing out the legal issues from our perspective, as opposed to actually invalidating the town's bylaw. As far as we're concerned, from our perspective, the decision the judge already issued invalidated the silver overlay, solar overlay district, so we are prepared to move forward. We understand there is some risk, of course, if the appeals court decides otherwise, but there is nothing in state law that says we can't move forward at our own risk, and the judge has allowed us that opportunity, which is why we're here tonight.
And if we go through the site plan process, and the judge rules otherwise, does that revoke the site plan?
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, if they can't build it, it's done.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's essentially correct.
Yeah, so they're, they're just, let's get the site plan done, and we'll go like this, both sides, and, all right, happens, it happens, if it doesn't, doesn't.
Okay, thank you, I just want a clarification on that.
Of course. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them, otherwise, I'm gonna turn it over to the project team.
No, that would, it was good that you, that you're still going back and forth. Now, for people here and us, is, when are those scheduled, or...
Both sides have submitted their briefs. The appeals court has not yet scheduled a date for oral argument. We're hoping that that comes in the next couple of months.
Okay, so this is no longer in land court, right?
We're not in land court anymore, correct?
On to the superior?
Uh, the appeals court.
Okay, and how, how quick are they? 'Cause sometimes you hear, it used to be two or three years of land court, what is...
Yeah, sadly, not as quick as some people would hope, but practically speaking, if we can get an oral argument date within the next couple of months, I would expect a decision probably either the end of this year or early next year.
Okay, and where did the judge, was that a land court judge in Boston?
Yes.
Okay, and where are these being held, the two battles?
Uh, still in Boston. Uh, still in Boston.
Still in Boston. Okay. Just wanna make sure they're not in Dedham.
No. They're not. They're in the big fancy building downtown in Boston.
Yeah. Well, in the county of Norfolk.
Right.
That's why we didn't wanna be. Okay. I thank you. You all said your presentation?
Yep.
Okay. We have a few comments from different boards.
No, I was just gonna give two slides on the project.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought...
Sorry.
Okay.
So, this is... We completed Phase One, which was the canopy and rooftops, and they've been operating successfully, generating about 2.2 million kilowatt-hours with about $105,000 of savings to the Aggie School. It has been incorporated into the curriculum. There's more than four classes that are using some of the data and trying to teach about what the future and the importance of renewable energy is. Those are the buildings, and I won't spend much time on this. I'm gonna flip to the next one. So, this is just the summary and description, and then I'll turn it over to Weston and Sampson. It's a five-megawatt AC array and a battery energy storage system, which is required under Massachusetts program, the SMART program. The array has been cited to balance pasture use. We moved it back. We've moved it many times. We pulled it back to the crest of the top of the hill and then down on the other side. We've tried to minimize tree clearing. We're now at about... and Weston and Sampson will talk about this, about 1.5 acres and a couple scrub clumps of trees. We're avoiding trails. The area is not being actively hayed currently. We've downsized it as much as we can to make the numbers work. One of the key issues, as I said before, is the cost to interconnect it to the utility. We've tried to take as much feedback. We've been at many meetings. We've tried to listen and see how we can do the... come up with the best solution for some of the concerns. The carbon offsets... This is just general information. It's 6,200 metric tons annually. It's enough energy to offset the electricity of about 1,200 homes annually. The carbon sequestration equivalent acres is seven... over 7,000 acres of U.S. forest annually. No additional services, and you probably know this, are required by the town. It's called the SMART program in Massachusetts, so smart energy credits will be generated by this project. They're net metered credits that can be... We've offered them to Walpole, as well as the county and other public entities, which, when we get to that stage, we'll finalize that. Local personal property taxes will be paid to Walpole, and under our agreement, we have to put up a decommissioning surety before construction, once final design is approved.
Okay. Couple things I wanna ask before you move on. Equal to 7,400 acres. I've read different that the trees actually are better than a solar panel, but... Okay. But the other thing is, before we get to Weston and Sampson, how are you guys paying property taxes? I don't quite understand. So, it's...
So, we'll have to be personal property tax under...
Oh, personal property tax.
Personal property tax. Correct.
Now, would that be you or...
That's Kierzaj.
I don't understand how that works with a public entity. You know what I mean?
Once the private entity... We've done this on many public sites, whether it's a landfill. We've... In Bellingham that we've done, we're charged by the local municipality personal property taxes. They look at what's the cost to build this. It's all DOR. It regulates this pretty tightly.
I just... Yeah, I'm sure you can do it. It just seems funny that you're paying us direct on the tax exempt land. That's all.
No, it's... It pulls out of the tax exempt status, but this is the personal property that's on the land.
And your last comment about the surety, you gave us the surety, all right? Why wouldn't it be Norfolk Aggie? It's on their land.
Um, you'll both have rights to the surety. That's what we normally do.
No, no, not them. Why wouldn't it come through them?
Why wouldn't it come through them?
Yeah.
Because we're putting... It's pretty normal in the process. We're gonna be the owners of the solar facility for the life of the solar facility. If we disappear, there should be a surety. We'll have an independent engineer who'll say, "To remove this in 20 years based on the cost of labor, the cost of materials, this is how much it's gonna cost to remove it. We have to put up a bond so the money can be accessed either by the county, Aggie, or by the town."
So, the bond will come from you guys to us?
And to... Correct. And to the Aggie.
The Aggie's part of it?
Um, though you both have rights to that bond.
Okay. My point is, say if it's you guys gone bye-bye.
Right.
It needs to be taken down.
Uh-huh.
We don't have rights to access it to take it down.
If, at the end of that period, if it's abandoned, the county has access and you have access to that bond. If the county...
I understand the bond. I understand we got the money, but we wanna go tear it down with our guys. We got the bond money. We can't get there because the Aggie can say, "No, you can't come on our property." We need something that says we will have access at the end because it's on our property. That's where I'm going with all this. You're the third entity.
Um, we've never had... We've never had that request before.
Well, you've never been...
But there's something we can do.
I do a lot with bonds and all this, so that's something... We would need access to it.
Okay.
So, different subdivision where we have a... I'll just give an example. A basin out back, the only way to get through it is someone's yard, but the town owns it. If it blows up or whatever, we can't get at unless the homeowner gives us permission. So, that would be the same thing here. There'd have to be something given to us. So, if we control the bond, we're gonna need some mechanism that's gonna allow us to access.
Sure. I understand what you mean now. Yes, that's fine.
Okay. It's not... I don't think it's a big deal.
It makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
If you give the money and you can't have access, what's the use of it?
Yeah. Right now, it doesn't mean 20 years from now when we're both sitting here doing this, continuing.
Yep. That's fine.
But I just wanna make sure because I've had that on a few cases here over the years.
Yeah, I understand what you mean. Yep.
Okay.
Part of it. Yep.
All right.
Okay. So, now I'm gonna... Any other questions? Sorry. Okay. Now, I'm gonna turn it over to Wes.
All right. I'll hold these because a lot of these mostly deal with what you're gonna have, you know, your designs.
Hi, everyone. Rob Bukowski, Weston and Sampson. So, I'm just gonna run through some of the details here. The total area inside the fence line is about 17 and a half acres. The tree clearing areas are limited to what's in the existing field now, so you'll see some of the tree line up to the northwest and then down along the western side. Those are all staying. There's some inner, more like clumps of trees that are in the field, so that's really where the tree clearing is limited to.
That's about one and a half acres of trees. Is that what...
Yes, about one and a half acres. Correct. The setbacks, we've got a minimum setback of 125 feet on the southern border. The setbacks from the nearest panel to North Street on the southern side is about 200 feet, and as you go north, it's about 600 feet. The interconnection, the electrical interconnection, is gonna come off. It's gonna go underground along the existing access road, and then it'll go overhead to tie into the grid per Kierzaj's agreement with the utility. There is some grading that's proposed just to meet the minimum slope requirements that are required by the rack manufacturer. So, on the southwestern side of the site, where the hill slopes down and goes towards the proposed stormwater management areas, there are some grading proposed in there to get down to 20 percent. Those areas will be matted with erosion control mats and seeded. The proposal now is to use a pollinator seed mix. The fencing is proposed to have a gap in the bottom to allow wildlife to go through. We have prepared stormwater design that covers both construction phase and post-construction phase. So, construction phase meaning erosion sedimentation control, and then post-construction is consisting of two infiltration basins that'll be on the southwestern side of the site. We are staying away from wetland buffer zones and riverfront areas. There was an ORAD issued, I believe, Dan, right, months ago? O and M. So, during construction, the biggest impact would probably be during the first three or four weeks when deliveries come in. They're installing posts, things like that. Once construction's done, traffic will be very minimal. It's usually a pickup truck for O and M-type visits, you know, maybe once a quarter. That's about it for what I had.
Okay. Are we the comments?
Can I ask a question on that, what he had? Just so we know after the back.
Go ahead.
So, you mentioned a gap in the fence to let the wildlife through. How big a gap is that?
It's usually like four, six inches. You wanna keep it enough so that some animals can scurry through, but you don't want it so much that people could crawl under it.
So, very small animal?
Pretty small, yeah.
And it's not gonna be farmed. You're just gonna plant some kind of cover crop?
Um...
It's not... They're not gonna pay it?
No, it's gonna stay. So, the majority of the array is on... Yeah, where Dan's showing there is on an area that's gonna stay as is. So, it's grass now. It'll remain grass. But the areas that we're proposing to regrade to flatten out the slopes a little bit, that'll be reseeded with a pollinator mix.
And will they cut the hay?
Um, they'll cut it, yeah, periodically, what, twice a year, probably?
And they'll be harvesting it, you know, actually using it?
We mostly use sheep.
Okay.
Vegetated.
Sheep?
We mostly use sheep now. It's a little bit more expensive, but we have local farmers come in, and we'll pay them to actually bring their sheep there. You can't use goats, of course, because goats will eat water. But as opposed to you need to, except for this year, you need to probably twice a season come in a sheep. It's an effective way, and it's very quiet, and it's what we've done in, I don't know, probably eight or 10 of our projects so far.
Thank you.
You all set? Okay. Every time you guys have something. To another thing, is this deemed still a farm? How do you have animals running through a solar farm?
It's for wildlife, not for farm animals, like squirrels.
No, no. What I'm saying is, you're gonna use sheep to eat the grass inside the fence. Isn't that a farm? Wouldn't it be considered a farm?
The sheep aren't there all the time, so the shepherd comes with like a trailer, and then they put the sheep out, and then they let it graze.
Yeah, that's a question I'm gonna have to have, get an answer to, because is it a farm or not? I mean, if... It doesn't matter. Farm's a farm if you put sheep on it, whether they're a day or 365 days, right? So, the question is, you're going over the Dover Amendment, whatever. Now, we're putting sheep in there, which is part of a farm, so what is it? I can't figure it out. I'm not disagreeing. Sheep would be fine. I understand why you do it, but now does it spin it into another... I know you can't answer it.
Yeah, I don't wanna answer it.
No, it's... I just... Is it a farm? That's all. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Before you get into comments, I'm on the advisory board for the community which I live, so rather than provide any testimony on this issue, I'm gonna recuse myself and step over the other side. The assistant town engineer has done the review on this project for the engineering.
Yeah, we'll check that question out because it is, you know, like I said, I... Does it kick it into something else? That's all. However you wanna do it, that's fine, but like I said, does this now consider a farm, or can you put a farm in a solar... You know, it's... Believe me, I'm gonna find... I'm gonna dig everything. I'm digging deep, but what the answers are, I live with the answers like you will. I'm not gonna push something that's my opinion that isn't correct, but I wanna make sure everything, when I'm done, has been vetted out, so. But like I said, the sheep, it's different. But that... Something else I was reading about solar, what is the temperature gonna be, though? Because my understanding, these panels get up to like 185 degrees, right? Everything I read says, you know, solar's only 15 percent efficient, and the rest of it just goes back up, and it's hot as...
Yeah. On a warm day, you can put your hand on a panel. We haven't had any issues with that. It's normally maybe 125 degrees. The panels absorb most of the sun and the heat that's coming down, so I don't... I've never heard the 185 degree.
Oh, I've read it can get to that, but it's still 125, which is pretty hot.
Yeah. Well, Dan's saying it's the same as the ground temperature.
There's the grass?
Well, so...
You're gonna have to... We need you for the record and the camera.
The camera and the record. So, the panel temperature is typically, you know, more or less the same as, you know, ground temperature. So, if you look at the driveway coming into the site, put your hand on that, that'll be about... Just a camera, the panel will be about the same temperature.
I just heard it's 125 degrees, right?
The ground's 125 degrees?
Yeah, is that what you said?
No. What we're saying, Dan, is that the panels can get up to about 100, 125 degrees direct sun, most.
So, my point goes with everything else around it, with sheep and everything else. It is gonna raise the temperature, the whole area. To me, it's no different than Gillette when they're playing. We always hear they play on turf, and it's like 110. So, it is gonna raise the temperature. We know that, right?
No.
It's not gonna raise... So, if I walk next to that, I'm not gonna be as hot as if I was 50 feet in the way in the... I don't understand how that works from a temperature.
No. We could take you to a tour of any solar facility, and you won't feel any change in temperature as you walk by the panels.
Okay. All right. One last little... Since you got on it and you talked about... I did read something that most of them require a study of all the environment, the wildlife they're impacting and all that. Has this been done?
Uh, I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, what they say is, you're gonna put this in the middle of a farm or field.
Right.
Is it... Was there a study done on what's actually there and the way the deer migrate? And what is this doing to all the stuff that you have now closed off?
Um, we haven't done that study. We've never been asked to do that study as part of it. Small animals can certainly go underneath.
I understand that, but like if you have a deer trail that's been there for a hundred... Oh, something that's been there. You're just... You're just plopping this in the middle, and so what for the wildlife? You've now, in a sense, knocked all the wildlife out of that 15 acres. You agree?
Uh, there's a fence around it, right? They won't have access.
Correct. So, now you've disrupted whatever was migrating through there. I'm just asking, has there been any study to see?
No, there's been no study.
Okay, no study. Okay. Study of migrate?
It's no priority habitat.
Yeah. One thing I'll just add is, I'm sure you're familiar, but the Natural Heritage Program in Massachusetts that, you know, they have jurisdiction over protected species, so checking their maps, they... This area is not mapped as a priority estimated habitat.
Okay. And the reason... This is coming, as you know, this is a farm. If we're building this on an old landfill, no one care. Nothing's there, right? But because you're farm and trees, and this has been since, you know, way back. I just wanna make sure everything's covered.
But just because it's not marked as a priority doesn't mean... I mean, obviously, anyone who lives in town or has lived in town for any period of time knows that there's certain animals that definitely live up there. I mean, I'm sure, just to name two obvious, deer and coyote. But what do you mean by that when you say it's not a priority? So, it is still...
Based on endangered and protected species.
Endangered and protected.
That's what we're required to check. We're not required to look at habitat for deer or coyote or anything like that.
All right. I got a bunch of things to read. First, from conservation, and the ORAD is Order of Resource Area Delightation. Most people don't understand that. I know you do, but... And what they've said is, the work area appears to be outside the 100-foot buffer to the bordering vegetated wetlands and outside the 200-foot riverfront. So, what you've done is positioned this that you will not have to go to conservation, which you don't wanna do anyway.
Correct.
Uh, the proposed activity will alter more than 40,000 square feet of land, so you have to go for a land disturbance permit through the conservation, and don't you have to file with the other one over five acres? And I forget what it is.
Um, are you thinking of the stormwater construction general permit?
Yeah. If you were building a building, you gotta do it in...
So, if you're disturbing land of an acre or more, you have to get coverage under the EPA Construction General Permit?
But there's another one that begins with that, and I can't think of it off the hand. I see it all the time on my construction stuff. And something. If it's over five...
Niptes? Are you thinking of Niptes and PDES?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the same thing. So, it's part of the Clean Water Act is the Niptes program.
So, that will be part of the land disturbance, is what you're saying with the...
Well, we'll have to do a stormwater pollution prevention plan, which is the document that has to be prepared before you get coverage under the EPA Construction General Permit. That's usually done closer to construction because EPA has two weeks to review.
Okay. I've seen it. I just wanna make sure. I know the tip point is, I thought it was five acres, but anyway. From the fire department, we haven't signed a chief yet. Chief Paul Barry. He needs a sweat path analysis per Mass Code 527 CMR-1, and I should say this was dated May 18th. Before I go through these, have you guys seen these since it was so long ago?
No.
No one went to get them? It was like two months ago. Okay. You understand what sweat path is for them, right?
Um, I'm a civil engineer. Sorry. I don't know if somebody else wants to...
It's for fire trucks. You gotta show them that they can get in, get out.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. The turning radius, and we can run that analysis.
Yeah. And you gotta design it per 527 CMR-1 for the roadway, okay? They don't want gravel roadway, and he wants signage to be legible and remain current. The future owners will be responsible, notify of any change or emergency contacts, which is a standard for them. You've gotta provide training for the four duty groups before they energize the site, which I assume is pretty much everybody does, right?
Yeah.
Uh, the applicant will work with the fire department, develop emergency response plan. We request the applicant confirm the distance between the battery system and the nearest dwelling. Further details for the battery energy storing system will need to be discussed during the permitting process, so they can evaluate their fire facility's protection needs, and they wanna know location layout of rooms or areas in which the BES is installed, information pertaining to the structure that'll house the batteries, quantities and types of these units, manufacturer specs, fire suppression and all that, and you'll have to get a permit from the fire department. So, a lot of that pertains to what you have to do for the building permit, but some of it, they wanna know... But some of it, they wanna know where it's gonna be located, so you might wanna do that one too, so that you don't show it here, and we say that's fine there, and then he, he says, no, gonna move it, okay? Um, Board of Health, this came, the Board of Health that they're, we'll not be meeting before the comments, but, uh, they'd like to make internal comments, and right now they don't have any concerns at this time, but you're gonna have to get something from them, 'cause they're a key into this. I don't know why they haven't had it, but, okay. So we tell them, because one of the things you always need, comments from the Board of Health, like they're the ultimate. So we'll have to contact them, see if they've had any updated comments since their last meeting in May. All right. And, uh, Chris isn't here, but this is from Chris Johnson, Assistant Town Engineer, and site from, uh, did you get these yet? No? May, oh, it's dated May 6th, but anyway. Uh, you need endorsement block on all sheets. And do us a favor. I don't wanna play Whiz Waldo. Can you put them in the right hand, one place?
Got it.
Uh, uh, let's see, provided table. Table one, from page three, on the project narrative and zoning information. He wants notes indicating that filed out of section 13 and 15. Uh, title references. He wants the title reference for the water easement, identifying the width and the note that it benefits the town, show the water line easements. On sheet C102, fence gate needs to be provided where water easements enters the solar array, which makes sense. Uh, and the town, says must be equipped with town padlocks. And you have for you guys to work out how you do that, but, um, no solar panels may be within the water easement line. And he said that the P is six panels to be on the easement line on the southwest corner. And general conduit location needs to be provided, fire truck turning, monuments at the easement corner. Plans and submissions, provide little information on transformer and batteries. If oil's required for this equipment, then they need some containment system details. And on the 16, on the 15.15 decommissioning needs to be established, we talked about that. And a form of bond has to be submitted for review and stormwater by the conservation. So a lot of these, as you know, I'm sure you go talk to Chris Johnson and see, it's a lot easier, but that's typically what most, most people will do. Uh, let's see. Oh, this is from you. I don't need that. It's a court case. Uh, we have as a from about, it went to about a thousand people, and it is from the Wapo Preservation Alliance and their, and as you read it here, and we, when we get into the, open up for the public, I'll let them give a brief synopsis if they want to, and what they're concerned about is, um, let's see, they're in opposition to it naturally, and the, and they talked about they are suing the county and they're talking about appeals and denial. So if they wanna surmise it, but what they've basically said is, they have a complaint just to notify us. It doesn't relate to what we have, I guess it's just a notification, but we want to speak to it at that time. Uh, no, nothing from the, do we have some from the police, I thought? No? Thought I saw some say that they wanted to see the distance between, but, okay. And nothing from anybody else, okay? Uh, with that being said, I'll go with Paul. You got any questions, comments?
Just be ready, I go this way and then I go this way. That's right, that's right, no problem.
Don't doze on me.
So, no, there's no dozing, I'm just, that's fine. Um, concerns about, you said battery, I, I don't know enough about solar, but I'm assuming that the sunlight gets stored to a battery then fed to the pole? So if you could just explain a little bit.
So, um, Dan, you can address as well.
So, basically, this is what's called, um, a AC coupled, uh, battery. So the sun, it comes down to the panels, the energy from the panels will feed the battery. And then, uh, the battery will then go back to the inverter and then it will go back out onto the grid as needed or as required. Um, one of the neat things about batteries is it can be released, and with batteries at solar projects, we've got seven operating right now. Uh, one in Beverly, next to the high school, um, um, throughout the state, a couple up in landfills. And it's a very effective way to eventually lower the prices for energy, because the batteries can then reduce it when you have these peak events.
So what's the expectancy of batteries? I mean, do you have to-
What's the, sorry?
Expect, life expectancy of a battery on these?
So, um, the life expectancy of most of the batteries is about 10 years. It depends on how you cycle them, how you charge and discharge them. So ours are geared up, we have requirements from ISO New England, um, and it's a critical part of the whole, um, rollout of renewables. And Massachusetts has been one of the leaders in requiring this on every, uh, project for the last, um, probably three or four years, Dan.
Okay. Now, is there any concerns, I mean, have you ever seen a battery not live the 10 years? And have, you know-
No, but batteries, the way these batteries work, they're in a contained vessel, it's like a back of a container truck. Fire suppressant system, so it's all within them, um, they're cooled and heated, um, so they sit as a separate entity. So if the battery were to go or we have problems, you can replace it.
There's no concern of any of the containment of, of, of the inner, inner things of a battery leaking out onto land or anything like that?
It's a fully contained metal box.
Okay.
Right, for, just for those reasons.
Okay. All right, okay. Thank you.
That's it.
So you said there isn't much traffic expected once a quarter, is that what you said?
Uh, yeah, after construction.
And how long's construction expected to take?
Um, probably four months.
Um, and sort of in relation to the traffic, do you need lighting? Is there lighting involved?
No.
So it sits dark and it's locked and secured and nobody can get in except for the squirrels and the rabbits?
So the way these facilities work, um, uh, there's no noise. Um, the only noise that you're gonna hear during the day would be the transformers, it's like being six to eight feet from a refrigerator or freezer. Um, but of course, at night, when there's no sunlight, there's no active, um, the facility is completely off. Um, and with safety protocols, I don't know, there's probably about a thousand of them now in the state, but with safety protocols that have changed and gotten more strenuous over the years, um, it can be turned off remotely, the utility can turn it off remotely, um, and there's all sorts of safety features built in.
Okay. Um, what I didn't hear, and I don't know if you, I missed it, but, so how much energy for a common person, not your, you know, scientific report? How much energy will be produced and who's gonna benefit? Who's gonna use the energy? How will that be?
So i- it's a good question. So under the, for this facility, we'll have about annually, um, somewhere around eight to eight and a half million kilowatt hours would be generated from this facility. Because of the battery, it can be put back onto the grid at different times. So all the electrons that are generated will go back onto the grid. The way the program works in Massachusetts is tied to the output. So if you say there's eight million, we'll use a round number of kilowatt hours, um, there's a value that's associated with that. Um, and that's through the SMART program. And that value then, um, you can go to a town and say, look, if you become the host, so we'll make up some numbers. Let's say, or what we do in Ames Bay or, Amesbury or Haverhill right now and in other towns. So what they'll do is they'll take, um, all the energy, uh, all the credits will be assigned to their bill. So if they got 100,000 credits in a month and the total value, and this value changes with a couple factors through the Massachusetts program, and let's say it were 20 cents, so if you have 20 cents times 100,000, you'd have $2,000 of credits. What we'll do to the town is say, okay, why don't you keep 10% of that and we'll take 90%. And so therefore, a public entity, it can also be a private entity as well, but most of what we do is with public entities, it could be schools, anything you want. They'll, with no risk, um, no minimums, um, they'll be able to get basically discounted at, discounted credits.
And then you turn around and sell the other 90%, right?
We take, right, we take the 90% to finance the costs of building these and running them.
For a quick one, what do you, you guys get reimbursed at wholesale, right?
No, um-
You got a better deal than the homeowner?
Um, I don't, the homeowner could get the same deal through the SMART program. This is the Massachusetts Incentive Program, which is called the SMART program, which is made up of several different elements, which has the cost of energy built in as well as the incentives. So depending on what you do, another thing we could do with this is we could sell the credits and we could offer them to low and moderate income, um, uh, individuals or housing authorities. And you'd get a higher incentive by doing that. So Massachusetts is trying to put the right incentives out there to get the energy to people who are gonna use it. And then with the original program was set up called net metering to get it to public, uh, entities.
And, but my understanding, if you're homeowner, you're at the low end, you only get wholesale, is that true?
No, um, as a homeowner, you can get SMART credits if you put solar on your roof.
Yeah, but I thought you had to have batteries to go up, what?
I, I am in the SMART program.
Yeah.
I have, I have batteries.
Right.
You get one for one, Phil?
Um, I think we're getting like 45 cents a kilowatt hour.
Yeah.
Oh, and what's a kilowatt hour?
Uh, uh, 1,000 watts.
No, no, how much? It's 45 cents, what, what's, what are they billing you all there for, for the full?
That's the credit we get.
That's, he gets a credit. So I have solar panels on my roof as well.
That's what I was gonna ask you.
Right.
You better have them.
Yeah, I have solar panels on my roof, but it was through an earlier program, so it, it's, think of solar as building a building. All our costs are upfront, we won't see a return for about seven to 10 years. So the revenue that we get, we'll pay operating costs, we'll pay debt, any of those costs like that. And then we'll break, uh, into cash flow positive at about seven or eight years, depending on performance and different issues. But when you put them up on your roof, um, so to answer your other question, which is another question which I didn't answer, a normal home uses about 10,000 kilowatt hours a year. So you can say in relation to this facility, which is producing 8 million. So those are just some of the numbers.
Uh, go ahead, Phil.
Is that questions in there? Actually, my questions are, will follow along with the, uh, the, hand out the, um, the plan. Um, so, um, you know, just to reiterate, Carl, or, um, the, from Chris's comments about the, on the, um, page G000, um, you know, the, the blocks, and I think the other thing, the locus is supposed to be one, one inch to 200 feet. Then you have it as one inch to 500 feet, so, so just following our, our bylaws.
Yeah, we can change that.
Yeah, so if you look at his memo, you definitely wanna do that. Um, sorry about that. Um, on, on page V101, I wasn't sure where the, the, um, the water easement was. It's shown, it, it's shown on that one, but, but relative to C001, um, relative to where the, the actual panels fall, whoops, one more. So, was, is it right here?
Yep.
Okay. And are these the panels that are referenced in the, in the way?
Yeah, these, these, well, these are the racks, so there'll be a number of panels on each rack.
Okay, okay. Um, and then you're really doing, you're, you're, you're not really changing any at one place, the highest or lowest, you're just changing the, the grade?
Changing the slope to the grade, to get it to 20%, correct.
So that's what the dock codes, uh?
Yeah, exactly, yep, on the, on the southwest part.
How, I, I know that the panels are gonna be about eight, eight feet high, the-
About eight feet and then two feet on the low side.
Yeah, and, and on the, the ridge line, and I know you're planting trees, how much higher above the ridge line do the panels stand up? The, you know, so, so part of the ridge line, I know it may be below the ridge line, you know, even at the eight-feet level.
So we did, um, do you want me to go back there?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be better, 'cause you need to be on the microphone.
Um, so we did some sightline analysis, I think, is that what you're getting at, whether you can see it? So, um, where you see the proposed screening, which is more on the southern portion, um, there's portions of that that you would be able to see the array from North Street from, so that's why we're proposing screening there. But as North Street goes north and the, the elevation starts to dip down, if you look up from North Street, it's the actual topography of the hill that obscures the, the view of the panels.
And now the part where you can actually see the panels, how, how much higher than the ridge line would you, would it be?
Um, I'd have to look at the plan.
Oh, okay, but-
We, I can get back to you on that, or I can look one.
Yeah, if you don't mind. Um, and then the, um, what, how are the, um, the, the supports for the panels? Is it, is it metal, you know, steel, in, in concrete?
Uh, no, it's just steel that's, that's driven into the ground.
Okay, so easy to take out at, at the, you know, when it's being decommissioned?
Right, yeah, they're, they're not concreted in.
Now, one question on, uh, and, and I'll be on C102 right now. Is that one of the things we require is, is a, a, a vegetation plan, a planting plan? So I, I, I know you have, um, on, uh, C501, you, you meant, or C503, I think it is. You specify what kind of plant it is, there are the item. Um, is this, does this represent, there's gonna be 64 of them, I counted? Is that the? So this is where you-
This is just to represent the limits of where the planting will go, the, these aren't necessarily to scale.
Oh, okay, so, so in our, in our bylaws, it says, you know, having a plan and maybe showing how many there's gonna be planted, you could maybe add that to, to C503.
Yeah.
Just a- And there's gonna be, um, the signage, there'll be the danger signs. How, how far apart are those signs gonna be on the fencing? Is it one like every 10 or 20 feet, or?
I, I don't know that there's a requirement, I mean, usually it's put on the gates.
Okay, so it will be around on the perimeter too, or?
You guys have done more than just the gates.
Typically, and, and it's, you try it, but we can, that gives it all.
Yeah, you know, just for a safety thing, so.
Yeah, we have to follow the electric code.
Oh, okay, right.
It'll be an emergency number that we monitor 24/7, um, all the new things you expect from the electric code.
And then again, go back to C102, um, where you have, you show the connecting, the point of interconnection. It looks like it's underground just for a short distance and then it's gonna be on poles? I was wondering why it was an underground right to the street?
So it's based on, yeah, stands, sorry. The, um, it's the standard utility requirement coming from the poles, and so we will have a riser pole that we'll bring the line to, then we'll drop down below and run underground from there.
So you're saying the utility requires it to go-
So they're gonna have equipment on their poles running up into the property, and then from there we'll run to one of our custody poles and then-
Okay, yeah. And then I, I know that we alluded to about the oil and the batteries, so if, and I was looking through your, when you filled out the, the project narrative, you know, so the, if there's gonna be oil, that would be considered a hazardous material, so you'd have to, you should address that somewhere with the-
Usually vegetable oil.
Yeah, so, so they use a vegetable oil in the transformers now, uh, for that reason.
Okay, so you, it wouldn't be hazardous then?
No.
Okay, okay, just wanna make sure. And then, um, on the, um, the battery structure, the, the, where's it, the, the, the B, the BASS?
The B, BASS.
Yeah, B, BESS. So is that, so how many batteries and, and are, you know, what, you know, what's the capacity, total capacity of the batteries?
You wanna answer? Uh, yes. Um, so I would, I would need to confirm the precise capacity of, of the storage system that we're, uh, looking at right now, because it varies with the size of the actual, um, solar array. But for a solar array this size, it would typically be two storage containers, so two 40-foot storage containers. And that will include the battery cells and all the controls required to, to run the system.
So the, are those like Tesla batteries or some, or?
I mean, what, what we, what you would typically see are, uh, the, the battery cells are, uh, yeah, uh, yeah, four feet by a foot, and the containers basically have those loaded into racks. So the Tesla batteries are sort of more self-standing, exposed. Uh, the systems that we typically use are fully enclosed in a container, um, and the cells can be changed out if, if they deteriorate, you know, to your point earlier. and the cells can be changed out if, if they deteriorate, you know, to your point earlier.
And my last question is on, on lighting. You might just want to make a note somewhere that there's really, you know, we require a lighting plan typically or some, but you could just have a note that the only lighting then is, is at the, at the, the gate?
There would be no lighting.
No lighting at all? Okay. And, and, and as you heard, the fire chief would like the, the, the roadway to be paved, you know, that goes, that goes into the, and then a turnaround, you know? Yeah, so. And then certainly, you know, I think we would always prefer have, not cutting down trees and, you know, taking open land. So, you know, that's a, you know, it's, it's not in our preview, purview, I know for this, for our hearing, for our decision-making, but just a, just a, an aside, that's a, fewer trees cut down obviously better.
John?
Yeah, understood. And the, the array was, so it was a, it was a balance, the array was shifted sort of downslope to avoid visual impact in certain areas. And, and so the, but, but then we reduced the size to avoid tree clearing along the edge. So we've, you know, worked very hard to strike that balance and limit it to 1.5 acres. And the 1.5 acres are sort of central to the field, more or less with a small amount where we're doing that grading.
Yeah, no, that's certainly good to, you know, that you didn't minimize it.
And I just might add that our commitment, quite honestly and sincerely, is to try to reduce this. And what's happening now is the panels are getting more efficient. So when we do build this, there's a likelihood that this will actually be smaller. It'll be the same output, but it'll be smaller in size.
So the footprint would have to be smaller when you actually build it?
Yeah, we're going to do everything possible. So once we finally get approval, we'd see what's available. But the panels have gone from 230 watts. When we, when I started this company thirteen years ago, now they're approaching 660 watts. A little bit bigger, but they've tripled in, in output.
Yeah, and I was impressed that these panels have eighty-five percent output even after thirty years.
Yeah, you lose about half a percent in degradation. We have a full warranty, a bankable warranty for 20 years for the panels and they'll probably last even longer because they really are just glasses now.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
John?
This part, please, to send my questions. What's the estimated life of the project?
The estimated life of this project is 20 years. We, we can extend it through our lease, but the lease is for 20 years.
And the batteries, you said have a ten-year life, is that correct?
Um, the batteries have a ten-year life. There's different parts of a solar facility that you will replace. So the inverters will probably last in the solar facility 10 to 15 years and will be required through our financing partners to basically set aside money to replace the inverters as well. And the batteries will last, depending on how you discharge and charge them, probably 10 to 12 years.
So over the proposed life of the project, you'll end up replacing all the batteries once or something anyways?
So are all the inverters at one place or they're like, no?
So the technology's changed, so you can use string inverters, which are smaller and more easily replaced.
So you're not doing micro inverters on the?
No, we can on this one.
That's a homeowner thing, yeah.
Yeah, you can on your roof.
Yeah.
Was mentioned made to Waterway or something? Could you expand on what that involves?
I didn't hear your question.
There was some mention made of Waterway or something or easement for Waterway. Could you someone expand exactly what?
Yeah, there's, there's a public water line that goes through there, so there's an easement that runs through the property.
Oh, it's a water line?
Yeah.
Okay. So the entryway, there's what, right around the middle, towards where the water line is, is that right?
Yeah, it's, the water line is, the water line is right here. And here's the entrance, entrance right there.
And that's North Street right there, okay?
And then here's the interconnect.
Doesn't really show it on these maps here as much. What's, is the slope of North Street like there? What's your line of sight from your entryway? I know at times traffic can zip by in that area.
Sorry, you're asking about the slope?
From your entry point, what's your line of sight left and right basically?
An elevation or distance?
If you're looking to the left, how far can you see before you see? Can you see, how far away can you see a car coming basically, yeah?
Oh, uh, so we did like sightline analysis from North Street up onto the array. We didn't do like line of sight analysis from that access point, but it's certainly something we can look at.
That's probably something that should be because North Street has become more busy at times. And I know, I haven't used it lately, but when I've driven it, the cars can get a little faster than they should be going probably. So it'd be a good idea to make sure, and I know there are some hills dressed there that may limit how far you can see in one direction. So that should be something that we addressed.
Yeah, we can look at this. The entrance is pretty close to the top of the hill.
I think that's it.
Okay. I got a few questions. Then I want you to submit a construction plan so we know what's going on because given the size of the site, we want your deal, we want to know what's up. In and outs, we're going to have wheel washes and all that, so we know ahead of time. I'm sure you do this for other projects.
Sorry, you, you're asking for construction plans, is that what you said?
Yeah, the plan that when you go to build it, where's the temporary gate? Where's the wheel wash? What are we putting down? All the stuff that goes along, so when there's mud from Westwood down to Main Street, we know that we should have had this done.
Yeah, I mean, there'll, there'll be a construction entrance, which I think we show on our plans, but?
But how it's going to accomplish and so on and how, as you go along and you start putting these things in, are you, any erosion controls and all that? It's the temporary construction that's standing in the business now. We haven't had one like this. Typically, we've had them on Route One, but there's nothing there if you think about it. But this is a lot of stuff going on at once.
They do have some of that on C zero zero one.
But they need a whole, just like we wanted on that other Lincoln Road. Next item is the panels. What's the pitch on them?
Twenty?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
We did a little thing in five, twenty, twenty-five.
Twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five, and how far off the ground are they?
They're a foot basically, a little ridge.
All right. Well, I'm asking that for my own because the building across from me has them on the roof. Called January. I see nothing, that's why I'm asking you guys. But a foot is, is sufficient. So if we get two feet of snow, you're losing a lot of megawatts or whatever you're calling it, aren't you?
I can, I can answer that. So normally, um, the panels will warm up enough, so it's, it's really closer to about two feet off the ground for most of them. So the snow will slide off and once the corner warms up. But you're right, if we get two feet of snow and it stays cold, we'll lose output.
Lose output.
But we don't want to go that much higher. And then the issue with roofs, of course, why they're flat, is because of wind shear.
Yeah, I'm talking about a flat roof.
Sorry?
It's a manufacturing facility, it's a flat?
Yeah, they, they can't go higher or they'll have issues.
But they, they're only this, when you look over and you get two feet of snow, you can't see them until spring. It's like, kind of redundant on why even do it. So that, there will be some melting around there, is that what you said? All right, before I heard it's going to be the same as the field. Now it's going to be a little different, correct? When I first started out, I said it isn't going to be hotter next to these? You said it'll be the same temperature as the field, so?
In terms of when the sun, it'll just be like being outside, the sun will warm it up. If the sun hits the ground, it'll warm up the ground or melting as well.
All right, um, you answered that. The lighting, you may get something from the fire chief, we've done these in the past. He wants a little more depending on what is, so, he's going to pick that, so I'm not going to get into that.
Yeah.
Who needs access and so on. So I don't think he wants to be going around the dock. Who knows, you might have little spots, so that's up to him. Uh, my only question is, what's the percentage of these panels that are bummed? That are no good? When you put them up, they don't work or they go out before their time?
I can tell you, in our history, it's less than a quarter of a percent. And we've had hailstorms and our panels haven't been injured at all.
Okay, well, I wasn't, yeah, I understand that.
But that's?
But I'm just, it's like, we all put lights up and all of a sudden that doesn't work. You put ten lights up, one doesn't work. What's, is there a hit to ratio that you guys?
There, it's very, very low because basically it's glass and steel.
Okay.
And we test them and the manufacturer tests them before they come out of the factory as well.
Okay, I'm just curious about that. Now, this is something interesting you said, is you're going to just sink posts in the ground. What's the wind resistance? What is the required design wind?
So, um, there's a, these racking manufacturers have structural engineers and they'll have to follow the, you know, building code to get the wind loads.
I don't care about going down. I'm talking about when a hurricane comes in and pulls them up. Because you put a steel post, you heard it's easy to take out. That's what I'm thinking. Hurricane goes, I'm waiting someday for the ones on the Bowes Hill in Framingham. You familiar with that?
No.
It's like this, I'm waiting for someday. You just see some of these and we haven't had a bad hurricane here in I don't know how many years. So I, I would like to know what the resistance is because if we do get a hurricane, what is the wind speed? Hundred miles an hour, hundred and twenty?
We build up to code, in most cases it's 125 miles an hour. But we've had these questions before and you can look in Florida and in tornado alley in the middle of the country where there's plenty of panels and there's no issues at all. But we have to build up to local code to withstand. I believe it's 125 miles an hour in most places, Dan.
Depends where, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's 125?
Yep.
Appreciate if that's put somewhere in the plan. Okay, because I do look at the ones in the houses and I know they don't hit the rafters all the time and I'm waiting for those to go because screw and apply what ain't going to last. But I'm just curious when you said that, that we want to make sure I don't, because especially a wide open area like this, if you're inside the woods, you'd be a little more protected. But you answered that question, thank you. I don't have any more. Now I'll open up the audience. And if you have questions or comments, we'd ask you to come up, identify yourself and then what the questions or comments you have and we'll figure out who can answer. So anybody want to be first?
I'm 1340 North Street. I'm also the president of the Walpole Preservation Alliance. Just wanted to point out that you had referenced the email that came from us the other day.
Yep.
In addition to just the summary of how this has proceeded, part of that was a nine or 10-page formal complaint that was filed with the governor's office, the State Ethics Commission and the D O E R about this particular project. So I would ask that you all take a, at least thirty minutes or so at some point and just review the full formal complaint. And also, in addition to the original lawsuit where the Norfolk County is suing the town of Walpole, the Walpole Preservation Alliance is also suing Norfolk County and both of those lawsuits are still pending. So I just wanted to clarify if it makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, I think when you said it before, your letters to McGregor Stevens one?
Yeah.
Lejeune and Stevens? Okay, that's the one we all got emailed.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do have that, so.
Okay, so it's an interesting read.
Yeah, one I got, one I want to go to sleep.
Can I see it?
No, really.
You got it. No, I mean, I had to read theirs a couple of times to kind of get it sink in because the courts, no, they don't like our court, they never date it on the front. You don't know what date you're dealing with, so.
Well, I'll tell you, we've got all the supporting documents that will put you to sleep, but the, the nine pages is quite a page turner.
Okay.
There's some, some solid stuff in there. So that's it, thank you very much.
Anyone else have questions, comments?
Good evening, Rudy Barajas, 1400 North Street. I live directly across from the proposed array. Just want to preface, I'm a construction professional and I've overseen solar projects even larger than the one that's being proposed here. So I'm experienced at looking at plans, engineering designs and construction documents. And I bring this up because I've been studying, I, I've, I came into town on 519 in anticipation of the hearing on, I think the first date was 520 something. So I came and looked at the plans. And of course, I've, I've been involved in a lot of the public hearings and some of the presentations that Norfolk County and Kirisarge have made in the, in the past. So based on, you know, looking at the plans, went and kind of comparing that to some of the previous presentations, is that the plans that were on file on, on 519, they do not pick, depict in a quantifiable way the area of trees to be cleared for this project. I know they're stating that it's 1.5 acres, but that's not something that you can look at a set of plans on file and, and see unless they filed something since 519. I also know that the town bylaws, you know, have requirements for tree removal greater than 40,000 square feet, which would be, and I may be wrong on the, on the terms, but land disturbance review by conservation. So based on my review of the plans and some of the previous graphics that they used in, in presentations, it looks like the area of disturbance could be as many as four to six acres. I'm talking about area of tree removal. And maybe that's, maybe that's outdated. You know, Andrew certainly said that they've made some adjustments and the, but what I'm asking, I'm not asking anybody to take my word for it. You know, the town of Walpole has plans, the town of Walpole has past presentations and I think, you know, somebody from the town should verify, are we really looking at 1.5 acres of clearing or are we, is there really more than 1.5? I mean, could it be four, four acres? You know, from previous presentations, it really looks like there could be. But that, I'm asking the town, you know, review the documents in your possession, come to your own conclusion and hold Norfolk County and Kirisarge to the letter of the law regarding the tree removal and public process required for this level, level of disturbance. So I'm just imploring the planning board to take this into consideration. I know a couple of things that came up during the presentation, you know, wildlife, you know, living across the street. I've been a resident of Walpole for 30 years, lived across the street from the North Street for over, you know, 20, 24 years. Yeah, we do, to your point, you know, I have pictures of coyotes, deer, turkeys, geese, hawks flying overhead. There are the birdhouses that the, that the county has on the, on the property there. So is it a habitat? Absolutely, there's deer trails that kind of come through where the, where the solar panels are going to go. So it is a very active wildlife area. If they don't have to study that or consider that, then so be it. But I just want to kind of answer that question. I also want to talk about the, the sightline analysis, okay? I suspect if there, if there is a reduction in the amount of trees because this array has shifted, which it looks like it may have, because I think it was 320 feet from Bubbling Brook Road and 500 and some feet from Skyview. It might be closer. The line of sight analysis was done a long time ago. I think the, has the array shifted? Is it closer to the road now than it was? It's not. Okay, so it's not shifted, okay? So if it hasn't shifted closer to the road, then there is a likelihood that they're, that it's still in the trees. Okay, that it's still, that, that higher estimate of the tree clearing is true. But, so the line of sight, and I know various areas, I can stand in my driveway and see a stick that is about four or five feet off the ground at eye level. So I know that you can, you'll be able to see an eight-foot tall panel from the road.
Where did it shifted from then? It shifted through the life of it.
Through the life of it, I know it's had.
But, but this one is set?
Well, see, so the, so the line of sight analysis and that whole presentation? Well, see, so the, so the line of sight analysis and that whole presentation to the public, so we've had, we had it done in 2020, we had a public hearing, it was online. Um, the line of sight analysis was brought, uh, was brought up at that point in time. So, you know, I'm just asking, has this shifted closer to the road since the line of sight analysis was done? Um, I know that if you go head on, if you go ninety degrees to the road, um, and I'm not sure your line of sight analysis, if it took into consideration, if you're driving toward 109 and you're somewhere across the field, across the street, look to the left, you can actually see, um, my visual reference point that I have on the backside of the field. So there are, uh, again, that reference point is only about five feet tall. Something eight-foot tall would obstruct that. So in other words, yes, the array will be very much visible. Uh, the other thing about line of sight is that six months out of the year, I just looked it up, how many years or how many months of the year in New England is there no vegetation or no leaves on the trees, right? So six months out of the year, you can see through tree lines. Um, line of sight, when you turn, uh, when, when you turn from 109 onto North Street, you're by Bubbling Brook Ice Cream there, and you look, if there's no vegetation on those trees, there's a huge view of the, um, of the panels at the highest, highest point, right? So you, so there's really nothing addressing that, that line of sight. Um, I doubt that the line of sight study took into account, six months out of the year, what you're gonna see fully in the Walpole from 109 because the elevation does go back up at that point. So the geometry is different. So if you're standing at the ditch, uh, you know, at, close to the brook, looking uphill, yep, it's a big swelling hill in front of you, you're not gonna see the panels from that perspective. But there are a lot of other perspectives where you can actually get a line of sight on something. Again, on the backside of the field, it's only five feet off the ground and, um, an eight-foot, an eight, eight-foot horizon of steel, you know, with a seven-foot high fence in front of it, it's gonna be very visible from a lot of different areas.
Excuse me, can I just?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He's asking questions that you guys can answer, so if you got.
I, I can share with you the line of sight analysis that we did. We, we looked at, like I mentioned before, like the southern, southern part of the array on North Street and then the northern part where it starts to drop off. If that's helpful, I can share those.
You have that, you've done that?
I do, I have them here, yeah.
Is it part of our package?
No.
Would you put it part of our package?
We can submit those.
Yeah, so that he, he can look at them too?
Yep.
Yep, okay. You all set?
Me?
Yeah.
I have more comments.
Okay, no, come on up.
Okay. Um, okay. Uh, so I think I've kind of talked enough, um, you know, about the trees. Uh, well, there, there's one thing and I, and I kind of addressing the board, uh, but you know, also for the benefit of the public. We've been talking, Andrew brought up, seven years. Um, we've been talking about this project for seven years. And as long as we've been talking about this, I don't think that, um, that it's really been clearly presented, like how much of the tree line is going to be gone. And I really would like the, this board and the town of Walpole to really know how many trees are gonna be missing, right? Because if you are taking the trees at the, at, you know, at the back of the field, uh, and then the, the ground slopes, uh, you know, away, it is, there's a downslope just beyond the tree line there. Um, and, you know, and when you do a solar installation, before you let the tree cutters go, you know, if you see trees at your limit that are going to shadow your, uh, your installation, I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna go to the owner, who's the owner, Norfolk County, I need to cut more trees. Um, that permission will most likely be granted. There could be more tree cutting than, than is, is necessary shown. Do you really know, you know, like if you're, has anybody really measured, um, you know, the height of the trees beyond the limit of cutting, okay? I'm gonna, I'm gonna wrap it up here, uh, quick, in a minute or so. So Walpole is gonna be missing that iconic tree line. The totality of experience driving into Walpole is the, uh, the narrow country road, is the white fence that you see for, I don't know, quarter of a mile, uh, the swelling green field and the majestic backdrop of trees, right? We enjoy it year-round, fall foliage and all of that. So if this project goes through, um, that, that picture, that landscape is gonna change. And the missing trees, we keep talking about what you're gonna see from the ground, the screening, um, and all of that stuff. But the biggest loss that we're gonna have is not seeing a backdrop of trees behind all of that. One last thing. So if you go to the New England Forestry, uh, website, there's a, a, a small write-up on the Patton Forest. It's only three sentences long. It goes like this. "The Patton Forest consists of four separate parcels that are part of Adams Farm Complex in Walpole, Mass. In 1997, New England Forestry Foundation joined with the town of Walpole and Norfolk County to protect over two hundred and fifty acres. There is a significant archaeological site on the property known as the Ellis Seller Hole. An extensive trail system winds through the entire Adams Farm area." And I'm gonna leave you with this final thought. The area of tree clearing, uh, that is proposed for this project is little over a hundred feet from a sign that says, "Welcome to the Patton Forest."
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I just add one thing?
Sure.
Just for, I just want to be clear. You mentioned the backdrop of trees, so as I had mentioned earlier, the, the only tree clearing proposed is within the limits of that field. There's a little piece that juts out and then there's some other sort of sparse spots of trees. So that whole line to the northwest and down to the west is gonna remain as is.
Uh, you're gonna give us what you had, like I asked you to submit, you said you already did it?
The line of sight.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, um, I gotta ask, question on the plans, uh, is a question on removals. These plans good enough to bid?
Are these plans good enough to bid?
Yes. So if I'm a sight guy, I go out there, there's enough dimensions, enough thing to show me exactly how many trees I gotta clear and everything else and there'll be no change orders or anything. So it's delineated like it should be.
The, the, the plan set that we presented would, would be in the solar industry, you know, standard for a bid package. So we have an electrical.
I understand that, that stuff, but part of bid packages, you know, includes sight. That's why I'm asking. This is sight plan. Is that sight defined enough that you could give a, a dollar amount?
Yep, we have existing conditions on there.
And you show exactly?
We show the modified conditions, um, between the two of those. You can see the areas that would need to be cleared.
Is it developed enough that there would be no question on what trees come down and what don't? And you're not doing scaling or?
There'd be no, there'd be no question. And we provide a, a visual backdrop as well, um, in the package that we would bid up.
Because that, because one of the things that you learn with trees is you go a little too far, you never get it back. So I just want to make, that's why I'm asking. So somebody could go out and bid, you, you guy cutting your trees will never come back for an extra.
Correct. We have a limited work shown on the plan set. It's, uh, it's, you know, tied to the survey of the tree line.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, oh, that's a question. Okay, do we have a visual backdrop?
Do we get that too? You said you have that?
Yes, I mean, we would, we could take the panels off this, for instance, and, and just have the outline of the array so you can see that the tree line.
Yeah, what we should have is, this should be a complete sight plan, which the existing conditions and how you're gonna arrive at there, which we're dealing with tree cutting and that, so we're trying to limit it, so that next step, then.
We can show the, we can show the landscape plan that shows removal of trees and I think.
Yeah, different layers.
Point made earlier was, you know, the planting plan as well.
Okay, and we're gonna ask the town engineer or his assistant to review the line of sight and everything that's been asked, okay? Uh, anyone else have any questions, comments at this point?
Charles Hayes, 1354 North Street, a resident of Walpole a rather long time. And I've been here before, um, you know, stand, being completely against this project, um, for a number of reasons. Uh, it's just too beautiful an area to cover with solar panels. Uh, there, happens all the time whenever there's a decent sunset, okay, people stop, take pictures. All right, it's, you know, quite a frequent occurrence. Um, I've stated before, okay, so I'm kind of repeating myself. Um, you know, the, uh, there's better places for solar panel farms. And, um, don't have the picture there, okay, but just to the west, okay, of the site there is the easement for the high tension power lines that goes from just above the Bubbling Brook from 109 all the way to Route 1. Okay, miles long, cuts from Walpole north, you know, you know, from north to south. Perfect spot, put solar panels. What is ever going to be put there? No one's gonna build a house under, under a hundred and fifty thousand volt electric line, so, so there's one example for. Uh, the chairman noted, uh, good use for the, uh, for the old prison is another. But nevertheless, uh, thirty-five years ago, the state proposed three sites in Walpole to be a sludge dump, all right, for the cleanup of the Boston Harbor. Fortunately, we fought off that attempt. Uh, a lot of people don't remember, but, uh, thirty-two years ago, the county wanted to, uh, subdivide all of, okay, the Aggie Field, both sides of the street, um, turn into gigantic housing development. And that was stopped. And so for the last number of years now, here we are again, looking to, uh, you know, ruin this by covering it with solar panels for measly five megawatts. Uh, you can tow a generator with a tractor trailer that'll generate five megawatts. Okay, so, you know, that's, those simple numbers don't add up, okay? You know, to, to destroy this beautiful an area for five megawatts of power, okay? When, you know, you have that area along the high tension lines, miles long. I'm sure the, uh, the sheep would have a good time, um, uh, taking care of all the weeds and whatnot. Um, you know, so, you know, it's just like, here we are again, a broken record. So there's so many better places that can, that they can be put. Roofs of buildings, okay, which they've done and are quite good at, okay? That, uh, I'm sure all the students at the Aggie School there really appreciate in the winter time or when it's raining out, when the, uh, you know, having a place to park, okay, you know, shielded from the weather. Um, you know, it's another example, but when they first proposed this, this is something that should keep in mind. Okay, they were going to cover the entire area, both fields, both sides of the street, all the way up to the fences. Okay, with solar panels. And they reduced it, all right? I can guarantee you that if this gets started, okay, that it'll be back in a few years and the county will be, they know we're not making enough money from it, okay? Or it's not economically viable and they'll be expanding it, all right, to take care of it, take it all the way to the, to the street. All right, and do the other, other field on the eastern side as well, so. You know, once something like this is lost, it's lost forever, okay? Well, you know, and it's just, when there's better places that it can be put, okay, that's, you know, it's just a simple choice. So, um, you know, that's pretty much it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, um, give you a couple of comments to what you talked about. Uh, the Anderson typically doesn't like stuff under their wires. If you own the property, you can do what you want, but it's at your own risk because typically there's easements. And, uh, you don't want to put a bill in there because if they gotta get in, they're not gonna, um, they'd have to knock it down. Uh, if you, only if you own the land. Them, I don't know if they'd ever let you do it. Um, you did bring something to light to me as you're talking again, and I wrote it down. I asked whoever can answer it from the applicant. Was this offered to the town?
Yes.
For how much? Hundred ninety-eight grand a year?
This, um, uh, through, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
By statute, in order to lease, uh, land, the county first has to offer it to the Commonwealth and then the municipality. Or it may, I, it may be the municipality first and then the Commonwealth.
It goes to state.
Commonwealth first, yeah.
Goes to state, believe me, as they in the old days, it goes to state, then us.
All right.
And then away you go. So, what'd the state say?
Uh, they passed.
They gave, this, can you give us what, their response?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, and the town said no?
Correct. Uh, you can get it from the select board or we can give you our copy.
I must have missed that. When did that happen?
Couple of years ago, I believe.
Was there any reasons?
Um, I'd have to check.
I thought they said it was cost.
It was cost, I have it.
Cost per year of a hundred and ninety-eight grand? Okay, if you can sue, what is the answer, please?
The town passed on this because it was the same terms that were offered to Kirisarge. So it would have been acreage that's landlocked and it would have been a twenty-year lease. And at the end of the twenty years, the town would have nothing to show for it. So there, there was not offered for sale to the state or the town. It was offered for a twenty-year lease to the state and the town.
Hundred ninety-eight grand?
Correct.
And they said no?
Right.
Well, in my mind, hundred ninety-eight grand is nothing compared to the town budget over a million, uh, over a hundred million. And the fact that our taxes have gone up eight percent for the last ten years and we build ten million dollars' worth of fields for a hundred ninety-eight thousand, it's a nothing.
I, I know that the town, the select board had also gone back to the county requesting, um, time to meet with them and to come up with an alternative plan. And, uh, the county would only do that in a closed-door session. And the town council ruled that to be an inappropriate use of, um, of a.
Yeah, you can't negotiate behind.
Right, so.
You can't do an executive session with negotiations.
Right, so they, it said it was, could not go into executive session. So the select board didn't want to do it because it would have been going against, uh, state law, which actually I, I think, that might even be noted in that. I, I really would like you to read the.
So I read it and there is something in there about it and I want to say it says they asked for ninety days.
Yeah.
And they were, didn't get it?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, I'll go back to where we started with. Oh, I love them all.
Yeah.
If I'd know, I know today that I would have sued them for being on my land up at the 420 Main Street. But that's another one. Okay, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
You all set?
Uh.
That's the only question I had, so, all right. Anyone else have anything? Because, okay?
Hey, doing, Mo, Mo Bellonica from Homeward Lane. Uh, they were saying that they have to pull the grade up on the far corner to twenty degrees. And I was wondering, what is the current grade now and roughly how much fill is gonna be needed there?
Partially, I can see that anyway. So it's twenty percent, um, so quite a bit less than twenty degrees, but we're, we're basically flattening it. So it's gonna be more of a cut than anything else. And then I, I can look up the exact cut fill analysis, but then that material will be used to build the stormwater basins.
And, uh, another question I have is, another concern I have is if, when the fire department requires a, uh, easement, is there a potential that they can actually require a road going parallel to, um, parallel to the road and then a big cul-de-sac in the back, so pretty much all the hay could be potentially gone?
And what they, what they're gonna want is, based upon what we had before, is access around in between the fence and the panels.
So it will be, everything will be contained within?
Yes.
The fencing, so, and I, and I, I do agree with the other resident of, this is just the beginning and it's gonna keep on expanding and we won't be able to stop it because once it starts. And I am a hundred percent for solar, uh, energy and I think it's great that they did the Dover Act at the Aggie. However, the curriculum doesn't change whether you have ten kilowatts or a million kilowatts, the curriculum's the same. ten kilowatts or a million kilowatts, the curriculum's the same. So I think filing for the Dover Act is inappropriate.
Okay, regarding at the Aggie, those are on the, on the garage. So they're, they're not doing a farm, like putting solar panels on your house. You're allowed to do that. This is, the Dover Act is saying that you can build the solar farm, which is not allowed on public land. That's what.
I thought they also pulled the Dover Act for the panels over the parking lot.
No, 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 you can, it's, 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 it's an accessory use to what you have.
Okay.
That's, that's just like any building you see now. All the parking garages are doing people putting on their houses. This is because it's solely existing as a solar farm. That's its only use. That's why they had to pull the Dover amendment on this.
And it's ground mounted. That's the.
And then, uh, one more thing. And then, uh, they were mentioning that the, that the batteries have thermal cooling. I'm assuming that's with fans and everything, so how is it for the abutters during summertime when I'm sure those fans are are trying to cool those batteries down? I'm assuming that's going to be able to be heard.
Happy to answer. So, two questions, um, two people asked the question about expanding. We can't expand it any more than this. The, uh, utility only allows us to do it at this size. We cannot expand any more than that. That's how it works in terms of how much it's five megawatts AC, we can't make it any bigger. So we can't, in ten or fifteen years, we can't do that. Once you get the interconnection from ever source, that's what you get. And things change. So if we want to do that, we have to start a whole new process and all the incentives will be gone. So we can't change it. And you want to answer the other question, Dan, about the batteries?
Yeah, sure. Um, so the battery containers do have a uh, cooling system. It's like a wall air conditioning unit. So that would be installed in the container itself. And so it would be no different to a sort of household air conditioning split cycle system. And each container probably has about half a dozen of those, or six of those.
Yeah, one more. So with the amount of grade they have to increase here, I'm assuming that has to go through conservation?
No, they already said they don't have to.
But wouldn't they?
They have to go for land disturbance. They do have a land disturbance permit, but everything, they, they're outside the hundred-foot wetlands of the two-hundred-foot river act. So they don't have to go to conservation for notice of intent and all that, that's done. But they do have to go to them for stormwater management and land disturbance.
Okay, but after a certain amount of yard, uh, if you have to provide so much, a certain amount of, uh, fill, doesn't that have to require you to go to conservation after over like a hundred yards or top?
That's another, that's another one we're into. No, it's right now, it's a hundred and fifty yards removal or add for residential, I think maybe two hundred yards is just nothing. But the only unfortunate thing is, in site plan, it's part of the site plan. If they, if there was already there sitting there and they want to move the dirt, then they'd have to get the special permit.
Okay.
But because it's done within the site plan itself, it's not, it's not required, because you think about if you did a big building like the mall, you're gonna move more hundred fifty every time. It's all part of it, it's taken consideration. That bylaws basically so your neighbor doesn't decide to dig a hole or put a mound behind you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have questions, comments? Quick, quick. You gonna stay for other two? Yeah, that's a no.
No, um, I just, uh, it was regarding to Catherine's question regarding the noise. And, um, I know that it's, uh, it's, it's, it's more than just a pickup truck. I mean, obviously, there's a lull running around all the time. The tree use clearing equipment is very noisy and it is probably about a week or so. And, uh, makes a lot of noise trying to pound, you know, two thousand, four thousand, how many posts into the ground. So, yeah, there will be a lot of, I think there's gonna be a lot more noise disturbance than it was characterized. There's ledge back there. Is there any blasting that's gonna go on? No proposed blasting, so you have soft ground to put post in all the way down that slope?
Well, I guess, no, that's a, did you guys do it? Did you guys do any borings?
I'm done with the questions. Thank you.
So we haven't completed geotechnical on the site at this point, but the typical approach, which we've used on fields of ledge is either screw, round screws, or just a pre-drill. And so there's no blasting, um, you know, required to install these posts.
Yeah, I understand how to install, but my question was, you guys done any borings on this?
I don't believe that the tests for the racking have been completed at this point. Because it's, given the racking technology, it's not required for, from a viability standpoint.
So you don't have to provide to the rack manufacturers their design of what type of soils you have?
At, at that point in the process, yes, the rack manufacturer will come out and complete their own testing.
He will do his own borings?
Correct.
How's he price it then? I mean, that's competitive. If you got three different guys and you don't know what's down there.
They, the, the rack manufacturer, I mean, we, we end up paying for it all, so.
No, I understand that, but it's just, so there's no borings on the site. So when the racks come in, they don't know whether they're gonna drill, they're gonna go down in muck, they're gonna go down in beautiful sand, it's.
As, as part of the building permit process, the rack manufacturer will come out and complete their required.
At that point, you'll have borings done.
Right.
Enough to ascertain what he needs to do for each.
For the design, correct, yep.
Quite the risk for the. Do you get the price before he does that? You know, you can't possibly get that.
The, the, the subsurface risk on these projects is typically pushed to the developer.
Well, it should be. It's your land. Or the Laggies land. Okay, anyone else? All right, with that being said, you guys got some homework. And what's on that meeting that they can, September?
September, you want the first meeting in September or the second? September seventh, there's nothing on, and September twenty-fourth.
The question is, you guys got a bunch of homework to get. And so our next meeting, well, we're gonna, it's summer, so August, and it's gonna be full. So you can take the first to third meeting, September. And just so you know, we have a requirement of, we need the plans.
Uh, Jack, I would think the second, only because a lot of the boards are still, you won't have.
Yeah, well, yeah, okay, you know, it's summertime, but here's, here's the problem. We require fourteen days in advance. So if you don't walk, if you walk in the plans to Thursday, two weeks ahead, you're all set. If you walk in anytime after that, it's over. So it's your choice. Now, you got between now and September seventh, but you got everything else in between. Including vacations for not so much you guys, but everywhere else in the town hall.
So we'll, we'll take the, the second meeting in September?
That wasn't hard. No, when I convinced, when I did this. You'll be working, I'll be working, trying to find somebody down there, you're not sure where, who's gonna be, then when, so, okay. Uh, what time?
Seven-ten, September twenty-first.
Okay, we'll continue this meeting, seven-ten on September twenty-first. There'll be no more notice and you'll have to have the stuff in, what, minus fourteen days, so mid-September, I mean. September's. All right, actually, September seventh, anyway. All right, okay, thank you. That's mine. All right, I want to do something quick before. I want to do this, uh, I want to grant, you got the extension for, uh, one? I'll take care of this before we get going. What, for what the existing and what you're gonna do? Yeah, just inside. We don't care outside. We aren't doing anything outside. Yeah, if I'm the digger, I want to know how many trees I'm cutting and all that stuff. All right, all right, uh, we have from legacy engineering. The American has asked for scenic rural public hearing to be held August seventeenth in two thousand twenty-three, and it grants an extension through August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
I need a motion.
Phil, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the background to that is he brought it in before this, uh, August meeting, so we certainly didn't want to be meeting halfway in between. So, that being said, so we take that off.
You guys have bad luck. We haven't been having long meetings.
No, they've been good luck. Uh, we'll, we'll continue to September two thousand and ninety-two, our subdivision plan. Where's the crew? No, no, no. Where's my favorite civil engineer, who everything draws straight? Oh, he's home. Oh, thank you. Didn't interrupt you coming off the boat, did we? Look at that. You can always tell the king, huh? King gets away with what he wants. All right, well, I gotta open these, so. With the hour being after seven-twenty PM, we have a continued site plan hearing, case twenty-three oh one. And a continued special permits, case twenty-three oh two. And we are now open, we had continued it to be, to have a full five members. So this is the first night of this continued hearing. And before I get going, uh, you guys have sent us a letter, not you, but uh, legal team, Phil had asked about why wouldn't this fall under the new one, but it doesn't because you still have your subdivision open. And everything, everything falls under that, so that's why we haven't changed, so.
Thank you for answering, yeah.
You're welcome. With the continuance, I thought it went out a few weeks ago, so sorry to rush it out at the last second.
We got it, Bill.
All right, uh, with that being said, and you got some new plans for us to show?
We do. So we've got some new plans, um, as we were here the last time. I think, uh, the four, the four core member from last time, free election. Um, I think we, we worked through a lot of the issues. There were, um, some, uh, housekeeping slash reviews to be followed up upon. Um, Beta Engineering has been through some rounds with, um, Taylor's, uh, firm, and I think that, um, Beta's, uh, position where they were content. I know, uh, Taylor worked quite extensively with Carl, um, on several of his comments, suggestions. Uh, they worked together and it resulted in some, um, very good changes, uh, which I'll ask Taylor to run through, uh, quickly, uh, if that makes sense. And I know that, uh, there are some, um, outstanding, um, issues, uh, that they discussed, uh, that I think, I'll, I'll let Carl speak for himself, but I believe that they were relatively minor in nature. And, uh, at the end, it, it struck me that they would fit into, um, conditions that would be picked up on the, um, final Mylar. That would be submitted, and I'll let, I'll let that play out. With that, um, I can ask Taylor to go through what some of the, uh, the changes were very quickly. And, um, it makes sense to then, um, obviously Carl can, uh, can weigh in, so we won't have them both, uh, basically saying the same thing. Um, but Taylor, can we have, um, you do that first?
Okay, just so everybody understands, we'd already, I forgot, we already opened this, and we were we had two people, one for re, uh, one for reelection and one new one. That would have put us at three, so therefore we could not do this properly. And so that's why this has been pushed, so just so everybody understands. Paul Smith, our newest member, uh, he can participate in anything he wants. The only thing I'd say to Paul is, what told by town council a long time ago. If you want to vote and you're not deciding to vote, you can vote. So if it's gonna be four-zero, you can make it five. But if it's gonna be, it's a two-to-two, you, you can't even, and you can't do mullen when you're not, there's a rule called mullen law. Yeah, you can't go backwards if you're not on it, so.
Got it.
That's where we are with here. And, uh, an overwhelming election win. Did you see me? Although someone beat me. I feel like Trump going against Joe.
I don't even know what the hell I did.
Stuff in the ballot box. Who is Dookie Smith? I saw that written in there. So, we're ready to roll, and since the last time, and.
Great, so, um, Paul, may I ask?
Yes, sir.
Do you want a general familiarization of, um, Renmar, West Street, uh, just overall where we are? Do you want a quick summary or?
Sure, yeah.
So, um, why don't I just pick up super quick, um, we've got West Street, so we're looking at, um, we've got fifty-five, I think, uh, plus or minus acres. Uh, we've got West Street, uh, we then have Renmar, uh, which runs down alongside of it. We're in a situation where we have, uh, Residence B, Light Manufacturing, et cetera. We had this permitted for one hundred, age-restricted, um, condominium, condominium-style, kind of detached, um, properties. What happened was, and we put it together, um, it was very, uh, straight, kind of rectilinear. And, um, what happened was, uh, they started going in, doing some of the preliminary work. And, um, just with grades and being able to start working with the land. We also spoke with Mark Romanowitz, who's here, who's working with us on some other projects. He took, took a look at it and, you know, he, he put his work into it. And then suddenly, something shifted, moved, it opened the door up for better solutions, better solutions. We came in pretty much kind of two-D with, you know, a lot of solutions. Carl took a look at it and putting his head together with, um, some of the changes that we had started to make with respect to basins, where different things occurred. It just opened the door up to some more, um, more improvements. So you've got, uh, now we retain a house, is a house which is existing at five thirty-four West Street. Built in the nineteen thirties, nice house. And we worked with the building commissioner to come up with a way where that can now be incorporated. By incorporating that, um, as a unit, what that did is that allowed us to move, um, a clubhouse. It just, it just really improved upon what we had for the design. So we've been back through, we coming in on a major modification. It's still a hundred units, you know, all of the parameters on paper are basically the same. But the way that it's arrayed, the way that it's laid out, the way the roads kind of sweep, et cetera. It's just, it's an improved product that we think is going to really be receptive in the market. With that, um, Taylor Crisano, who I'll, she hasn't been introduced to you, is from, uh, Crocker Engineering, and she's been working with Carl and also with the review engineers, um, Beta, on some of the improvements. I'm just going to have her go through kind of the current iteration of improvements, um, because I think the rest of the board's up to speed with where they were before.
Before you go, um, a little more, give Paul a little more background. Could you show him where the industrial subdivision is?
Yep, so Renmar.
Yep.
No, not your industrial.
Oh, I apologize. Okay, sorry. So what we did as part of the letter that went in, um, that we, we sent for, um, Phil's question. We came in, uh, and we filed it, uh, basically a preliminary plan for an industrial subdivision. The board, uh, was good with that, with comments, et cetera, and then we go forward to, um, more of a definitive plan. So we've been pushing along on that. We, you know, everyone knows what we were doing. That allows you in Massachusetts to freeze the zoning. So we've been going through the motions of, um, a definitive subdivision for an industrial subdivision. But that allows us to basically freeze the use, uh, here in the limited manufacturing. When we came in, there were some changes, very rapid, that were occurring because of the other, um, was it Polte, if I recall, um, what's the other one? The AQ, um, the AQB fifteen?
Yeah, fifteen acres, yeah.
So there, there was some, um, movement quickly, there was a new project coming in, and the bylaw was changing quickly. So we, um, had this in the pipeline to come forward, so we were able to freeze the zoning so that our design and everything could go forward. So that's, that's what you're, you're seeing here. The subdivision is, uh, on, it's been continued to this evening. What we will do is we'll, no?
September.
September, thank you. So that's just gonna stay going on in the background. And then, um, hopefully we'll be in a position where, um, you folks, we'd love for you to close it, um, this evening, if possible. The ultimate plan will be upon getting approvals, that, that will actually be withdrawn and, you know, that whole, hopefully we won't see you in September, let me put it that way.
Yeah, but it is.
All right, I'll come back.
Please.
We'll come back in September.
I remember when you were all, your hair was all black too.
Yeah.
Mine too.
Yeah.
Now, you, and just so everybody understands, you could get an approval on that, and it's whether what you want to do with it. Or the subdivision.
Oh, as far as we could get the approval?
Yeah, you get the approval. It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't constitute, is gonna get Paul into a lot of this of moving parts, so they could just have it approved, and they could decide what they want to do at some point.
That's, that's true, and we would not record, you know, et cetera. We do, we have different options, but what we do is, um, you know, industrial subdivisions are not, you know, typically, um, what we're doing. The weather. you know, typically what we're doing. The weather, oh, and this, I should mention, this is a Weathervein concept that the Bristol family has done. It's tremendous, about 150 units in, in Weymouth. It's very successful. We're doing it in other communities. It's just, it's perfect demographic, perfect size, people who, you know, have houses, you know, all the years the kids grow up, all of a sudden, they qualify, they're 55. A lot of folks don't like going in apartment style, having a condominium that's age restricted. It's very, very high quality, but also a standalone dwelling. It's, it's just super attractive. You have a garage, you know, you've got your own garage, you've got your own driveway. It's, it just winds up really hitting that sweet spot. So, you know, Walpole's got a great demographic, you, you know, you've got great aging population, and it's a nice property. So we're hoping to get this done, to get this going before the rates get too crazy.
Age on those? Back end compliment, I guess.
Yeah.
We got great aging population.
Great aging population.
All right, two other things I want to point out to Paul. One is they did a water line. Have you guys done it yet? Or not yet?
No, so it's.
That's coming when this is?
The water line goes.
You're gonna put a water line from Renmar all the way down to 1A. And on top of that, it's going sidewalk. So we're getting a sidewalk out of it. It determined, it's probably cheaper than trying to go through the middle of the road too, I think.
Yeah, well, there's the sidewalk. The other thing is, is there are several lines. What it does is it allows us to change the way that some of the water loops and loopings are, are existing. It's not necessarily like a water capacity. But what happens is you've got different deficiencies in town with respect to water pressure, particularly in emergency situations. So the water company had a study and they figured out how to redistribute some of the, you know, different areas. So by putting in, I think it's a 12-inch main, the way that it connects, it goes through, Carl actually spent a lot of time with us, how, how the gates, everything hooks in. But what it winds up doing is it solves a longstanding problem that the, that the towns had and been aware of. So it's kind of a, it's a win-win.
There's one other little thing, I don't think it's ever come up, but there was a question on whether you guys were taken out illegally, didn't have a permit.
Taken out?
That you guys were moving dirt out of there.
Oh, right.
But you didn't need one because you, you're familiar with the old quarry, right? Yeah, that's been existence, what, 1910 or something? So it's been existence. So they were still under that. So there was a few noises about that. But that's, they were under that. So other than that, it's, everything else is.
So it's continuously, it's been continuously quarried, et cetera. The Bristol family owns all, Weymouth seam face granite in Hingham and Weymouth. And, you know, their family's been doing it for like over 100 years. The thing is, is that this stone, unique, not a huge demand, it's a very specialized stone. So it's not, it wasn't a big loud operation. They were able to come in, harvest stone so many times a year. And they kind of did it with such a, you know, a light footprint. It wasn't something that got a lot of people's attention like their other places. With that, Jack.
Do you want to explain that?
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Taylor with Crocker Design Group. So since we were last in front of you in January, plan wise, layout wise, nothing has actually changed. As part of this process, we also had to go back to Concom to modify our permit, which kicked off a peer, a peer review with Beta. And then Carl did a separate peer review with us. So like Jeff said, we've been working to kind of address most of those comments. When we were in front of you guys last, which is this layout, we had these basins throughout the site that had some pretty steep slopes. And both Carl and Beta didn't like those. So the major change from last time to this time, I think I grabbed the wrong plant, is we swapped the, this front basin, this one, and this infiltration basin six to underground systems to eliminate the need for any slopes, which in turn also eliminated a lot of the peer review comments the second time around. So as you'll see, we have an underground system right behind, as you come off of West Street, behind the clubhouse. We have an underground system on the Renmar side, next to the unit eight, nine. And then right as you kind of turn down Bates Quarry to the back of the site, that is also an underground system. In addition, we also originally had an underground trench system, kind of along the property line against 530 West Street. We swapped that to the other side of the road, per peer review comments and coordination with Carl. We also, I feel like just, it was a lot of minor things. Carl had, he did a very good review. I was like, we got to know each other a lot, from the back and forth of picking up on labels, some catch basins not labeled. But from an overall plan, has that changed? Nothing changed, unit count, layout count. It was all underground. And just to do with stormwater and drainage. The other thing we did switch, we had the sewer line running down the easement. And Carl asked us to swap that between units seven and eight, kind of threading right through the two trench systems we had, to tie into Renmar F. In addition to, through the peer review with Beta, they asked us to add some additional drywells for the roofs and the homes, which we added to the plan. And lastly, Carl asked if we could put in a lift station rather than having E1 pumps for a majority of these back homes. So we've been working with him to address that and provide some more detail. And Carl, you can comment more. But I think, yes, Concom voted last week. We have approval with them last Wednesday. We got approval on the modification with them.
All right. Mr. Ramon, does want to say anything? Are you just sitting there?
I do the planning, but Jeff is really the best marketer that I know.
I am in the demographic, so I can speak directly to what appeals to people.
Guy drives all the way up from the Cape and not to say anything, huh?
Oh, he's had a lot to say the last two hours outside.
Oh, outside, oh.
He loves solar power, apparently.
Oh, yeah. All right, all right. Okay. I will read the comments we have. This is from Board of Health. And they're reiterating their comments of May 23rd, which shouldn't matter because they're not meeting this month. But the plans haven't changed since that time. So what they said, and they've said this many times, I think you had on the last one, they want a dedicated person to work upon, bark mosquito, to perform mosquito treatments for the wet basins. They'd like an annual gutter cleaning in the early spring months. That's kind of, not the way to do it. Unless you like having ice dams all winter. Okay. Insulation and maintenance of active fountain in the stagnant water in wet basin three. You have that on there?
Uh.
You got a fountain in basin three?
Uh, I don't think we have one proposed on the plans, but we can.
You're gonna have to, well, this is Board of Health, they carry the big stick.
Got it.
Okay, last one. And they want biological tablets for all catch basins, for cats. Now, when I read that, I'm like, never heard that before. Is this a new thing? Or do you guys know? Or Kyle?
Yeah, it's, I think it's the, it's like a Israeleus, the toads, I believe, that eat the larvae, the mosquito larvae.
Are we putting them in all the town catch basins?
I can't answer that. My former town did.
They do all the time?
Uh, they did.
So they put them in and then Truax and company come and dig the manholes out right after that?
Yeah. Maybe, maybe.
Just for you guys, that's his brother's company. All right, I just never heard of it. So, okay. How long has this been going? Because this is the first time. You don't know, Kyle?
I don't.
Never heard it.
Yeah, I don't.
First I've seen of it as well, but it's not unknown to me.
Same.
Okay, the police department dated June 11th. And they want to make sure the sightline measures, the entrance are true and accurate. And so won't create a safety hazard in any possible, if there's any possible another entrance, which we already know. And updating the sidewalks of ball fields, he'd like, he's asking for a lot, and adding a traffic light at intersection West and North Fox Street. And add, oh, this is by Officers Foley, not Officer Lou, because pollen. So asks for a lot, but, you know, they, we've already been down this road. He'd like it, but we've already done the mitigation for that. And what's the rest of the board think? They'd like to have a, we're already done, I don't know if Steve, Officer Steve Foley knew the past, because we're already done the sightline, right, Kyle?
All that.
Yeah. And that, he wants another entrance, but, because he's new to it, he didn't know that that, that can't happen. And sidewalks of baseball field can't happen because you don't own the land up there.
We had talked about that way, way, way back.
But instead, we've gone the other, we've gone the other way several times.
We did, we did address it. We addressed.
So I believe that we connect to the bridge. There's a sidewalk on the bridge.
Yeah.
I don't know, I was not present for discussions about going the other way. But certainly going back to Main Street about a mile or so, somewhere near that.
Yeah, what happened there is because there's no sidewalks and someone else owns, I don't know if it's one or two houses there, or they own everything to the bridge.
I don't know.
We own.
You own to the bridge?
Yeah. Well, no, we don't own to the bridge, but there's nothing between us and the bridge.
That's what I'm saying, because there wasn't sidewalks. And the reason we ended up with sidewalks was nice to go down North Fox Street is put the water line where the old ones were.
Right. And that allowed us to super mitigate, if you will.
You know, he liked it alike, but that's, we've already been beyond that. So, all right. Board of Health, I got it twice. Well, Concom dated the 19th, that they ordered amended orders of conditions, 3151173, and a land disservice permit for Weathervein. And so it did say, you got the approval, I didn't say what date, but it was July 19th. Land, as I said, what you had indicated, I had something for Carl's. And the rest was yours. Memo telling us what was up, that's just covered. And so Kyle, you want to read yours?
Sure, Mr. Chair. First of all, I agree with Ms. Corzano's recap of the changes on the project. We did issue a memo dated July 5th. It really boils down to maybe a page and a half of really administrative comments, things like putting the endorsement block in the right place, listing zoning districts, the things that we usually see on the cover sheet. The board might refresh my memory. I had made a comment about providing roadway signage in here. And I actually think that was discussed towards the later part of the original approval. But we have label stop sign on Weathervein Drive, things like that, really administrative comments, and a few technical comments on the construction details, quite a few comments on the sewer pump detail. And really, that's, that's the extent of our, you know, and I've noted at the end that, as we get towards decisions, that the original site plan had the special permit decisions printed on it, but it didn't have the site plan. So we should get them all on this version, plus the amended decisions. And I'm assuming that the amended decisions will be fairly simple. So really, it's really a lot of administrative comments on here.
All right, there need to be some of them. You might go. But the, the one that's the kicker right now is what Board of Health wants. The phone.
Sure, I guess. I don't know. Do you guys see that as a difficulty?
No, but my point is.
Yeah, it's not on the plans right now.
We're gonna need that on the plan, because, because if I'm on the Board of Health, I wanted that. You know, some of the administrative stuff, we always say, we can wait till we, after we approve it, before we endorse. But that's something that you should have on there ahead of time.
Yeah, obviously, these will require some plan changes as well.
Yeah, yours will too, Kyle. But I just want to explain, you know, when you get something from the Board of Health, we can't say we'll get it at the end. So, all right. John, any questions, comments?
I had a question on the changes to the pumps or something at the far end of the project. Either Carl or someone can explain what changes that was about.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
They mentioned there were some changes to the pumps for the water or the sewer.
Oh, the sewer pumps.
Yeah.
So each house just has an E1 pump, which if you have a basement, a bathroom in the basement, it just pumps up, just due to that walkout elevation. Carl just asked that rather than having, we probably have like 30 E1s, that we just put in a lift station instead. So it's just a smaller station bed, when it's like six by six, eight by eight, underground, that everything would be forced main to pump to it.
So, so rather than each house, John, having its own small pump going into a forced main, now each house will have a regular gravity sewer and go to the street. And they'll all collect into one station near the end, call the sack.
And then get pumped out.
And that will get, it actually gets pumped back up.
So using gravity feeds out to a central location, and then using that to pump it down to the street. Okay.
So instead of 30 potential.
Part of our logic was to look to the future and said, if there's ever a way to get in this sewer in Renmar Drive, that state, that pump station can be eliminated. There's actually an easement in that corner of the development as well, to be able to get over to the lot on Renmar Drive. If we ever run into a situation where we can get rights over there, you get an easement, you can put in gravity and get rid of the pump station and loop the water. Or provide another loop for the water.
Not have to dig up 30 E1s.
Finish business, right.
Yeah.
And Kyle, that would have back, backflow support, you know, protection? Or does it not need it? No backflow protection, but it's gonna have a generator. It's got dual pumps, it has alarms. It has all the normal, normal pump station safety precautions. This is all proven technology. The E1s would have been the homeowner's responsibility. So you would have been responsible for making sure that that was running and paying for the repairs. This one will be owned by everybody. It would be owned by the homeowners association, or whatever the joint ownership form is.
Regarding the Board of Health thing, which location is the wet basin number three that they were talking about?
It's right in the middle. It's where the existing quarry hall is.
Okay.
My article's due, so it's.
So that's still open?
Yep, it's still open.
It's why the one in front. Okay. Nothing else I can think of?
Thanks, John.
Um, yeah, just want to reiterate some of the changes that Kyle noted. You know, certainly you're gonna go, for example, the, the stop sign at the, at the bar, stop bar, Weather, Weathervein Drive and West Street.
Yeah.
You know, so you're gonna go through all those.
All of those, as they're minor remodel.
Yeah. But good to have those on the plan, particularly, we like the signage to be, you know, all specified. So I know we talked about this before, but just put a plug in for residential sprinkler system in the houses. I know, I know that this is not mandatory, but we, I know, I think prior conversations, I think you declined doing it. But I would just like to promote that, if you're, if you want to reconsider that. And then on the sidewalks, I think, I think there's just a couple of places where there's not sidewalks in the development. I know that has come up several times with Sarah, when she's on the boards.
Oh, and the small, yeah, that one, it's only services about four homes. Not sure it makes sense. And in Weathervein, they find most people walk on the road anyways.
Okay, it's probably hard to argue that. Yeah, okay, just, just noting that.
Yeah, no.
Yeah. Otherwise, I don't think I have, oh, and then the, the, the request for the light, the light, the side, light sign, line sign for the road. But that we have an accurate, there is an accurate measurement for that, right, in the, in the.
Yeah, we've done this a hundred times.
A hundred times, right. Yeah, there was a, there was a traffic report with the original development. It was peer reviewed by our engineering.
No, because Steve Foley's hasn't done that. He was probably covering for Luke Powell. Luke's been there, I think, on the, when this first came out. So he knew all about that.
Yeah. Yeah, no, as per, I think, last meeting, you know, the, the changes you make, I thought were really good, moving the, you know, the clubhouse and the, you know, using the house at the, at the entrance and everything. And we've talked a lot about a second entrance, and that's not going to happen. So, so thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, we do have a second entrance.
The, but, but not, not a public, yeah.
Yeah, because Forest Street is all, you know, this winter, by the way, you don't have to plow that. I'm telling DPW, send you a bill for the last, what, 50 years? God, you see their trucks at night up there trying to back out of there? It wasn't pleasant. It was tough. Okay, all set, Phil?
I'm all set.
Okay.
I have no questions.
I have no questions.
Okay. Question. Wet basin. Is it always gonna be wet?
Yes.
How do you keep it wet in the summer?
It, that's a good question. I.
Only ask good ones, so.
Uh, so theoretically, yes, it's wouldn't be wet most of the time. In a hot summer like this, it may dry up a little bit, but it's gonna take a lot of stormwater and it's just gonna hold it. It's all ledge underneath.
Yeah, well, the question, well, where I'm going with this is how well will that fountain work? That's the problem.
You guys have a couple of wet basins in Weathervein. I think the fountain for Board of Health is more so to just keep the water moving.
No, I understand what they're for, but I'm thinking like in August, not this year, but like last year, what are you gonna do? Does that thing, does it only work when there's water?
Um, I don't know. Yeah, I think so. I would imagine I would assume that there's no water and it's.
Yeah, right. There's like a float.
Yes, it does. Like in your pond, if it kicks on, then it's a certain.
Okay, all right, so there is something, yeah, okay. Just a question, because I've been around too long. I was here for the wet basins, then we went dry, now we're back to wet. People didn't like the wet basins originally because they didn't like the mosquitoes.
Yeah.
So they went to dry, and then there was a problem with the dry. What was the problem, Carl? Do you remember?
This particular situation, they couldn't really do it. It's all ledge.
Oh, here, I understand that, but I'm saying just in general, gone wet, dry, now we're back to wet.
Seems so, but I've always been a dry basin. We advocated for dry basins for that reason which you mentioned, the mosquito control.
Yeah, so I just, as my own question, I just, that was a little different, so. Anyone else in the audience? No? Okay, um, now, you guys gotta get it together, okay? What do we need from them other than pay, we need legal stuff, right? Don't we need homeowners and all that, or do we even review that? No, this is site plan. We don't have to do that. So, okay. Question being, we got a little bit of stuff to do. We have this, what, seventh or the twenty-first of September?
September seventh or twenty-first.
If you're nice to us and you want the twenty-first, I'll put you before Kearsage, so.
Thank you, and I've got potential wall pole planning board hearing here. I think last time you promised we could be on first because something, something.
You believed me, huh?
I did. I think I wrote it down. You want to say twenty-first, or do you want to push on the earlier date?
You have the industrial one that night also, the twenty-first.
Okay.
What?
Industrial subdivision.
What industrial?
Yeah, this one.
Subdivision. What's twenty-first?
So twenty-first, right, will be here, and then when would you need the plans by?
Fourteen days in advance, minimum.
Great. Excellent.
What time's the industrial subdivision?
It's seven oh five. We'll do seven oh six ahead of Kearsage. And I need an extension.
You did. Thank you.
I need an extension.
If I can put this behind Kearsage. Oh, we need an extension.
No, 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 it's gonna be seven oh five for the subdivision.
Do we need an extension on this?
Yes.
For both of them?
For the site, for the special permit and site plan.
That's right.
I don't need it on the subdivision.
I know, I understand.
I pay attention.
No, what I'm doing is we don't give them a date till he gives us an extension. No tiki, no wafers. So we give us an extension up through September thirtieth?
Yes, please.
Okay, you give us to a writing when you get a shot here. I'll make a motion to allow applicant extension up through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, John, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right, now, seven oh five is your subdivision, seven oh six is your site plan, and seven oh seven will be your special permit. So we'll see you September twenty-first at seven oh five.
Great. Thank you very much. Good to see you all. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your summer.
Yeah.
I bet he's going on the beach.
Yep. Mark, will you be back?
So when did we start with them? I gave you half a minutes. I swear we've been with them like nine years. I think you're right.
Spinning. How you doing? What's going on?
Congrats.
On what? Oh, this year?
Position here.
It's a prison sentence.
How you doing?
Good, not were you?
Good.
How you been?
Good.
Yeah?
Real good.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Still riding?
Not as much. My girlfriend's got a Peloton and her house uses that one.
Spoiled, yeah. Come on.
I was in Florida last winter. We took a couple of classes down there.
Yeah.
Come on, let's go, kid.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll see at Captain House.
Well, tell Lou I'm going.
Captain House.
Yeah.
You know where that is?
I don't know where that is.
Yeah, I know. It's in the area like where.
Buzzes Bay, yeah. I don't know.
I've been here as much.
Where do you go, down Buzzes Bay?
We have a boat in answer. You know where you go now? Go to the Cove. Have you been to the Cove?
Where's that?
You know where Stone Bridge is?
Yep.
The corner, on the other corner.
On the other corner, yes, that's a new name.
Yeah.
Same place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's all redone. They have live music every weekend downstairs, at the bar downstairs.
Really?
Yeah.
Jack, have you been to the Cove? The south.
Me?
Yeah.
Cove where?
By the Stone Bridge.
You go down that area?
Yeah, he is.
Yeah, he's got a big restaurant in the west.
Yeah.
The guy who owns the pizza place.
Yeah, same family.
Yeah.
It's Mike Anthony's?
Anthony. The same people, yeah.
My father used to.
One place they don't like people is, what is it, Stash's Place on the dock? I know, whoever owns it now.
I know, it's, yeah, something new now.
It wasn't that good in the. No, I'm not wrong. I'm miles and miles away.
Oh, yeah.
No, he's not.
Miles and miles away.
Do you have a house down there?
I'm miles, I have a tent. Like, that's the case.
He's over past.
I'm on thirty-two Parkwood.
Wrong number, yeah.
Where is he?
Don't.
Overpassed.
Don't.
Overpassed Crooked River Road there, you know, like.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Lydia's.
I can't believe we ever run into each other down there.
If we, yeah, you're right. I would run into you there, Robbie boy.
We took a truck and we ever run into each other. You must hide.
Yeah, I could really hide.
That's where I should be.
With the hour being after, uh, seven thirty, we have a continued public hearing for Walworth subdivision. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Kate, all, the four of us are all eligible, right?
Yep.
Okay. Same thing again, Paul?
Yep, I understand.
Okay, all right, let's open up. How, I mean, how, um, Rob?
So since our last meeting, which has been some time, I'll put a record, Rob Truax, GLM Engineering Consultants. Uh, we made some revisions to the plan, and primarily, the biggest revision was we went away from the waiverless, uh, the waivers, went to a waiverless plan primarily, other than some waivers that we were asking for that were not based on like dimension waivers, pavement waivers, et cetera. So we've now revised the plan. We have the pavement width back at what's required by the subdivision regs, twenty-six feet. We increased the cul-de-sac and brought it all up to today's standards. Uh, we still are asking for four waivers, but they're on the plan, as you can see, they're primarily, and we can go through those when we have a chance. But, um, other than that, I don't know, Paul, you want an overview of this? Want to give you a quick run through?
Sure.
See how you weren't here, so. As you all may recall, this was a parcel.
And it was owned, it was owned by the people on Summer Street, the entire parcel.
Mm-hmm.
And two houses, block one R and two R, we did, and our plan actually harbors two houses, two in the back. And now we're accessing what's called Lower Road, coming with a cul-de-sac to access the two new house lots, lot A and lot B. Lower Road's a public way. It's paved and improved up to about here, which is somewhat forty, fifty feet shy of the actual property line and the end of the right of way. And we would be improving that roadway all the way out to probably the intersection, I think, at the end of our construction line, this pavement section. So putting in a culvert crossing. There's a brook that goes through the site, comes down here, through the site, we're putting in a box culvert to get over the brook. And that culvert doesn't, that will require an order of conditions. And it's just two house lots with cul-de-sack. We're proposing some drainage basin down here in the back. And this is all part of lot A. Lot A is a three and a half acre lot. Lot B is a forty thousand square foot lot. And like I said, we are asking for some, what we would consider minor waivers for the project. And we can go through those just to give the board an idea. And originally, we'd come in here asking for a slew of waivers, pavement width, twenty feet, I think it was, cul-de-sack reduced, no sidewalks, no curbing, things like that to reduce the project cost. But at the end of the day, because of the public road issue and the town would be accepting it, it seemed in our best interest to go forward with our roadway that would conform to the standards, so we weren't asking for those waivers anymore. So with that, um, just quickly to go through, I know Carl's got some comments. I've seen those. I got those this afternoon. Had a chance to take a look at them briefly. We do have a new set of waivers on the plan, and I just want to go through them real quick. So the first one is section three dash one, and it's the municipal impact analysis. We're requesting a waiver for the exception of the storm water management. We provided a storm water management report. The second waiver, we're asking for a traffic data analysis, requesting a waiver of no traffic report. The third one is related to drainage system. Your regulations require that a stone line channel be constructed down the center of a drainage basin. We no longer do that with the standards today that are set forth under the DEP guidelines. So we're asking for a waiver of the stone channel to be installed in the drainage basin. And then we've added one, which will be the fourth one, which I'm gonna give you a new letter tonight, and we're requesting a waiver of the volume of runoff from the site. So this site, we did soil testing out there, and it's, um, very poorly drained soils on the site. And one of the things that we use in our, in our calculations is we, we look at the natural resources and what we call NRCS, which is the Natural Resources Conservation Service, and that's how we define soils within the area mapped throughout Massachusetts. And this area is under a hydraulic group of what we would call Soil Group D, and they rate from A to D, D being the worst, A being the best. And under the storm water standards, Master EP Storm Water Standards, I quote, that recharge volume should be infiltrated only to the maximum extent practical if a site is comprised of D soils. So they don't recommend infiltration on sites with poorly drained soils because of long-term failure and pollutants and et cetera. So we did do some recharge in the basin. It's a very small basin. There's a very small amount of water going through the site for the increase in flow. So we're asking, we're mitigating the rate of runoff from the site utilizing the basin, however, we're not mitigating the entire volume of runoff. So we have a slight increase in volume of runoff, and I can give you those numbers. They, if I gave you the numbers in gallons, we do it in acre-feet, which is like point oh five.
So that's runoff off the property?
Correct, leaving the site. So in gallons, point oh five would be equivalent to probably half of a twenty by forty built-in swimming pool. Because I know my swimming pool was like twenty-seven thousand gallons, and that would be about thirteen thousand gallons of water. Just to give you an idea of the volume of that water for that increase. So it would be like someone draining this, half this swimming pool down, pumping it out. So I think with that, I'll turn over the board for questions.
All right, what we have here is Concom Landis Ferreche dated the nineteenth of July. And this project does not have an order of conditions from Concom or a superseding order from DEP. The two notices of intents were filed with the conservation. The first notice of attack was not accepted by the commission because there was no authorization from the town to do the work within the town right of way. DEP upheld this decision. The application was incomplete. The applicant then appealed DEP's decision. The second notice of intent was filed with the confidence of conservation, was appealed to DEP by the applicant for failure hold of public here within twenty-one days. So that's what we got there. And the next one, actually, the last one is Carl's.
Your Board of Health?
Hmm?
Your Board of Health?
No, I don't see it. I need one.
You probably have one from before. They just don't want to write another one.
No, no, we need it, because you know, that's one requirement.
What's that?
Subdivision control, Board of Health. It's a requirement. Last general wants to have something.
They don't comment in forty-five days as considered approved.
I didn't say that in our book.
Says it in the Board of Health regulations. That statute.
No.
They only have forty-five days to review a residential project.
I didn't see that in my book, so we don't have it, so. You want to send along to us, and we'll comment to Board of Health, but anyway, I've never had anybody issue that, but I understand where we are. Okay, so, Carl? Oh, wait, okay, timeout. If we don't have one from them, what do you care?
I was just asking, because you always have one.
Yeah, but then what would you care if it's over forty-five days? Kind of.
I just figured you had one, because you've always had one.
So you must think we need it. Okay, Carl?
Mr. Chair, I provided a letter of this date to the board on the first section. This is a continuation of a review that started back in November. So I think this is the fourth review. I did recap the changes on the plan, which Mr. Truax has already summarized, but I quickly noted that the pavement width for the road has increased from twenty to twenty-six feet, which is what's required in the subdivision regs. Um, the cul-de-sack paving diameter is eighty-eight feet now, it was eighty-two, which is, it's now a subdivision rules and regs. I did note that grading is now shown in the abutting property at Seven Wall Street, although that is grading from the section of the road of Warwick that's within the public way. Um, I also noted roof recharge units have been added to lots A and B, both sides of each lot, to do some infiltration. I did note that the drainage basin control structure has been modified. It does retain water, which it didn't previously, so there's a small amount of infiltration provided by doing that in the basin. Um, and we note that various details have been shifted around from one sheet to another. And some of the edits in the prior review have been addressed, plan edits. And then we continue down to, you know, to go through the memo and say what's been addressed and what hasn't. Some of these comments are applicable to the part, to providing information for the culvert crossing. Um, that would be the part, you know, that would be applicable to work in the, in the public way. The new comments addressed on this thing, we note that number seven Wall Street's applied for a curb cut permit on the Wall Street side of his lot for the benefit. That's a lot on the corner of Wall and Warwick. He has frontage on both. Um, he had applied for curb cut permit. We noticed, noted that in there, and that anything to do with the existing part of Wall Street would need to accommodate that. And then we also noted, as we were checking on things, that research has revealed that the town meeting authorization acceptance in nineteen seventy-nine has different numbers on it than the taking and acceptance plan. And it appears to stop short of the end of the road, or at least the numbers say that it does. Um, the remainder of the memo, it once again reiterates comments that were, you know, we want to see various revisions in addition to the, um, details on the plans. And we did note what Mr. Truax mentioned, that there's technically another waiver that has to be added to the plan for the volume of the drainage, and Mr. Truax has already explained that.
All right, um. So everything somewhat being addressed and so on. What was the one, oh, there's five B. Enlighten us. On your comments. About the road.
Um, the, the town meeting authorization stated that they would accept the road, I believe, to station nine plus nineteen. And the, uh. And the acceptance plan notes that the road ends at station nine plus twenty-one and some change. So there's a couple of feet plus or plus or minus difference in the two. So just recapping and said that the components that make up, first of all, it's, well, my, why would we look at this? And say, it's an unusual thing to accept a piece of, of road that's not constructed, which the town evidently did. So I checked the town meeting authorization to make, to see if there was a difference between what was author, what town meeting authorized and what was shown on the plans. And there is, but it's a small difference. It's not, not that they stopped where the road was constructed. They stopped somewhere near the end of it. Or at the end of it, whatever the case may be. But the numbers, the numbers do not agree.
All right, so the road does not, except the road does not hit the property?
So is that, is that include part where the bridge is?
Yeah.
Right.
So there's the bridge not on town property?
Well, there's no bridge.
Or the culvert, where the culvert is?
It, I thought what you said, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I read what Carl sent, and I thought it said to the terminus of the road. And it said nine plus nineteen plus or minus. That's the way it read in the.
It says nine plus nineteen plus. There's no minus there.
A plus.
What is the plus, Rob?
But it says to the, to the end. It says terminus, the end of the road. It says that.
Yeah, but doesn't, you're supposed to go to the end of, you've got, not was it nineteen plus, what should it be, twenty something? So basically, town meeting didn't accept the whole road.
If you will, Mr. Chairman, I've got the article, a copy of the vote there. It does say terminus.
Okay, but it doesn't, but they, they determined the terminus was at that nineteen plus.
So we'll just, we'll get a legal opinion on that.
Yes, we're gonna have to.
That's fine.
It references in, in the article, references the plan.
No, it doesn't.
We'll get, we'll get a legal opinion on it.
We're gonna have to, just so we understand. I know we've been down this together.
I know.
Whatever town meeting says, I don't care what somebody writes, rewrites, or whatever. Their vote is it. If someone screwed up afterwards writing the taking or write the plan, doesn't matter. Town meeting controls. They call squivners or whoever they want to blame.
Gribners.
Gribner, oh, how about clerical? It's always a good one. You got a clerical one you can name in your office?
Skribner.
That's his name?
Well, that's how we do it.
I know.
They put a Skribner there.
So you're gonna have to get, well, right now, we don't have anything there. And what, how are we coming along with the town, Ed?
Excuse me?
How are we coming along with the town? Even if you did go there, there's nothing?
No, well, we've submitted our application for a street opening permit. It's been complete. And according to the town engineer, he's referred it to the select.
Yeah, and they're the road commissions. But I don't understand how it's a street opening permit because you're not opening the street. It's an extension to a road.
But that's what the, that's the only permit that you have for that particular territory.
There must be other ways to do it.
It's the only.
There aren't other ways in the whole world to do it, Rob?
There probably is, but that's what your town does.
Our town doesn't say it. You read the street opening permits to dig the street up to put something in it. Doesn't say to extend it.
That's not what it says. If you, in the bylaws, the town's bylaws, and the policies created by the select board, it spell out specifically what the street opening permit is for. And one of them is for construction of the right of way, or work in a right of.
I didn't read that, but you're gonna have to get your opinion on the other two. But so far, nothing's gone anywhere, right? You're stuck in the mud.
No, we, we have some division in front of the board.
You know what, Lou? I'm gonna tell you. You know this right off. I can say no, and I would, you could appeal it to cows come home. You have no access to it. So you got choices, either extend it, pull it, or keep extended until you need, until you get your, your ducks together. If you don't, my vote is no, because I can't approve this, because you have no way to get to Warwick Road.
I don't understand what you're saying.
You understand fully. We aren't bound to approve this plan.
I think you should talk, I think you should check the town board's records where you find it substantially different. We wouldn't be here if we didn't technically have the right of way. Right of way, the town's of easement, all the way to the end.
But right now, we have a, a road that you're trying to develop to a point, and there's no connection to the town. It's a town road. So it's, it could be a chasm a thousand feet deep. Doesn't matter. So you have a, right now, in theory, you have a road that connects to nothing.
Actually, that's not true, but if you want to maintain that position.
Okay, then you, you're legal. We've gone back and forth. And how do you figure that we owe you an approval on a plan that you can't build?
Well, why don't, why doesn't the town engineer or the planning board ask for an opinion from legal counsel?
No, it's not up to us. You're the developer. You tell us. I'm not spending my money, the town's money, to solve your legal. Because you, you've got plenty of lawyers, Lou. I've, I've got a whole slew. I can't keep track of them. Depends on what it is, but this is the town's. This isn't, I'm not, no, you get your own opinion.
Sir Jack, just to clarify, you're saying that there's a gap because of the?
There's no gap. They can't build this, because they, they don't connect.
Because of the, the road not being accepted?
No, not even that. The fact, forget the road not even accepted. We still have a gap that there's no road there. So he could never, if the, if the selectmen don't do anything for twenty years, I mean, how do you propose a plan where the selectmen could say no?
Well, then they'd be in violation of the statute, which requires them to maintain the public right. So I don't want to get into a big deal.
Okay, why, why don't you, oh, you've got great legal opinions. What?
It's a two-lot subdivision. The board can put conditions on its approval.
We can, and the board can say no?
Yeah, they could.
So I mean, it's.
Would that be practical to do that?
Yeah, it would for me, because I'm getting tired of this stuff. If, you should come in already set to go instead of doing this, but.
Well, this information was just given to us at five o'clock this afternoon. Why, why are we waiting till five o'clock after we've been in this process for sixteen?
Okay, so let me understand. Because the town did the research that you should have done before you proposed this, where it's fault. You did it?
We've done.
Or what, you must have had a legal opinion before you bought the property to say you'd go forward with that town meeting vote?
Well, I have, I have the information. I'll get it from you.
Yeah, but you didn't do your due diligence prior to this.
Exactly. Sure, we did.
Well, then how come you're saying we only just give it to you today at five?
It's your opinion.
No, it says right there.
It says to the terminus.
It said nineteen plus. Nothing.
Nineteen plus nineteen plus, to the terminus.
What does the plus mean?
And I think we're going in circles here, so.
Of course we are. I like going in circles.
I have notes from March second's meeting that we talked about the brook and the culvert and the selectmen. And we said you needed to get something from the selectmen, get that settled, and come back to us. So I feel like that's still, that's a huge thing hanging out there.
Absolutely.
And I think that does set a hurdle for us until that's satisfied. The other question I have, and I don't know, Carl, if I directed to you or Rob or who, but there was a neighbor, I think his name was Mr. Kelly, who was concerned. Is that the?
That's the Wall Street house.
Is that the curb cut, or whatever you called it, you were talking about?
We've been, we've been talking with him. We met with him. We went out, we surveyed his whole lot. We did a topo survey of his lot, so we could show him how his driveway would go. His new driveway, and he's been working with him.
So now, now that you're sloping it, does that go on his?
His new driveway is a circle off here.
Does that mean you need our easement though, to do that on his land?
No, we don't need an easement if he gets his permission.
Okay.
So he's, he's, he wants to loop this driveway out? He's gonna have a circular type drive. He's coming out like right in this general area.
But just so the board understands, that doesn't concern us at all. Anything beyond that line is all dealing with.
I know, but I'm just, he, she made the comment about him having concerns.
No, I understand, but I want to make it clear, even for Paul's understanding, anything beyond that, it's not in our purview, because it's the town's property. And any improvements, we'll go through the select.
But Jack, it sounds like it's two separate issues. One is getting the select board to vote for, you know, approving the.
It's three now.
And then we have the, the, the second one is the acceptance of this, of what, what was accepted for the street.
So, so may I ask a question? So if we provide a legal opinion, Mr. Chairman, that we have the rights and the roadway is accepted to the terminus of the, shown on the plan, and you, this board will accept that legal opinion?
From your guy? Yeah. You'll take that to the bag. No, of course not.
Give you an opinion, and you're gonna go.
Okay, what, this is what you want us to do. You want us to charge up our lawyer, and that's it. But if it doesn't come back, guess what, Lou? Come back in our favor. You're gonna charge your guy up, and we're gonna have volleys back and forth.
Just asking a question.
No, I'm just.
You're asking us to put an opinion on the table?
Yeah.
And then what will you do with that opinion?
Send it to town council. To review, the town council will review the opinion, not do all the legwork that goes into it.
But might I say, that's not specific to you. That's the way we've done it.
Okay.
So that's consistent with how it's gone.
The money's involved in doing the digging. Reviewing the digging is a little different. It's like a peer review.
I think you can even refer to the policies and procedures of the select board, because you're not really, Carl will explain it to you better. Section of the policies and procedures of the select board that apply to work in a right of way, in a public way. And they call it a street opening permit for all the types of work that are permitted.
Oh, I don't agree, but it doesn't matter. That's not under me anyway. I gave you my own personal opinion, Lou, and it doesn't matter, right? They don't listen to me. I just, I have my own opinion. So my opinion will matter in this. So there's no need to, you and I beating each other up over it, okay?
It's one of, so really, all we need to do is have a legal opinion, title report that says we have access, and then.
We also need something, you have to settle your issue with the selectmen.
I have no control over the selectmen. It's been submitted. We filed the application. The town engineer has not issued us the permit, which he had the discretion to do, but he hasn't done it. So at some point, somebody's gonna push the envelope a little further and we're able to get a, an action to force the issue to the.
I love actions. Seen enough.
It's the town engineer's responsibility to issue the permit.
Gee, he knows our book inside and out. But he didn't know about this problem with the town meeting vote. Okay?
It's not a problem. We might have been out, but it's.
Yeah, any opinion, my opinion is, but it doesn't matter. I'll be getting.
All right, so what do you want? Do you want a continuation? What, what is it?
What do you, what do I want? Right now, we can't vote this approved. They do not. You voted down, or you can continue.
So we'll continue one more. We'll play one more, we'll play one more game.
I have a question.
And we'll continue it. When's your next available meeting?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first?
Twenty-first of August.
Oh, August.
You're not meeting in August?
Are we?
We have a meeting.
Yeah, well, I don't care, because, you know.
August seventeenth.
That's fine.
Okay.
Seven thirty?
Seven thirty.
What's the?
If the selectmen don't respond to us.
What was the date?
August seventeenth.
August seventeenth at seven thirty.
I'm gonna try.
Jack has, Jack has just a legal opinion at all. I mean, if you're asking for three things, and he thinks.
Oh, no, no, we're still, Clay, we got, this is the new one. He doesn't connect. He's gonna give us this legal opinion. It's gonna bounce back to our attorney. And his attorney says it's his way. But we still can't, I'm not gonna prove anything where he can't touch it because he can't build on this side because the selectmen control it. So you basically have an island.
Yeah. Yeah, I would, I would just ask, sir, I mean, like, so, I mean, I understand you have an application in front of the select board, but when you.
Well, we, we, we don't know where it is. We filed it and completed the application as the proper procedure with the town engineer. We don't know what's happening with it since then. So the town engineer has told us that he's put it on the town administrator's desk, and we haven't had any response back. So you can play with it how you want.
Those apply. We don't answer to them.
Just so, just so you know, I mean, the, it's, Warwick Road is an easement. The town took an easement. They don't own the, they don't own the roadway that's under it, so. It's a bunch of semantics here.
I'm not sorry. It could be one of those undeveloped pieces that each person owns this, huh? Who knows? You do, that sounds familiar, doesn't it?
It does, but there's also other aspects in it.
Oh, I know. There's lots of aspects.
Let's move on.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's move on. So.
We're not going, Kate.
So we'll, we'll, we'll request a continued for August seventeenth.
We need an extension, don't we, Kate?
Yep.
How is that?
Could it be enough time?
Do you want to extend it too?
It's up to him.
Probably not.
Is that gonna be enough time?
I was gonna say, are you sure you want to go August seventeenth, knowing?
I think we should come August seventeenth with the legal opinion, at the very least, so then he can get it to town council.
Yeah, yeah, but I know what's gonna happen. The way you said we're gonna do it one more time, and then he's gonna say, no, I ain't moving. So hey, we'll, we'll cross that bridge that doesn't exist when we get there.
So let's come on the seventeenth to provide the legal opinion. And let's grant the extension. We're gonna get continued to the next meeting.
No, I'm gonna play Mr. Petrosi's games, because he is, he wants it the twenty-first or seventeenth. So fine, you can, seventeen, but we need a continuous, at least to the end of August.
I was thinking of giving it to the end of September.
That's up to him.
So, Mr. Chairman, is there any, is there any way that the board can vote on the waivers?
No, why vote on anything? We don't know what's up. I'm not gonna waste my time voting on something that may never exist.
It's only a courtesy. I mean, it's really kind of.
A courtesy would have meant for this to have been all done, but we haven't got the, afforded that courtesy from you, so.
But it sounds like there's partly here a catch twenty-two, though.
Let me extend to the end of September?
Sure, why not?
Thank you.
Why not?
But it sounds like there's partly a catch twenty-two, that, that, waiting on us, waiting on the select board.
Well, I have a question since no one's, hold on, press me. I haven't finished writing.
Just writing an extension. Writing.
No, I have a question.
He wants your undivided attention.
Oh, sorry.
You mentioned something, the A, B, C, D in the soil, and one wasn't totally mitigating runoff. Can you explain which direction the runoff will occur in?
The whole site basically comes from Summer Street. Slopes this way, come down, and some of it gets into the brook early. And the majority come down as a very vast wetland. This is all wetland down here. So this is all the wetland area. And it continues all the way out towards Stoney Brook Road. So all this water comes off this property and settles into this wetland area.
Okay, so the runoff that you aren't being able to mitigate is just gonna go into the wetlands?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then it goes into the brook, or?
The brook, actually, the brook comes down, it actually comes all the way up by Route One. And it comes down from here, or is it, it comes down along this property line.
And that water.
But actually, this wetland here is picking up the water from the sheet flow. This isn't hitting the brook until the brook discharges into the wetland.
Oh, okay, the opposite.
Yeah, so the brook is carved out. If I'm going down beside it with a drain pipe, the brook is right along this side. And I'm putting, this is upland. I'm going down right beside it. And I'm putting the basin here, so that brook's coming down and discharging into this wetland. And then we're discharging into this wetland. Which primarily, most of the wetlands are on the site that we own.
It's understandable.
Do you want me to say it? Can we have an extension?
September thirtieth?
What year?
Two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah, just because, because we are never recorded. I know what that is about, yeah. I'll make a motion to allow the applicant time through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Second, twenty-second. All in favor?
Aye.
Because if we didn't put that down, it would be like having a town meeting vote of nine plus nineteen. It would be like us, September thirtieth, two thousand what?
Nine plus nineteen plus.
Plus, plus what?
Want to continue to here?
What year was that?
Do we already do that?
Seventy-nine.
Did you vote it?
No.
Okay.
When, when do you want?
We're gonna come on the seventeenth to give you the legal opinion, so you can give it to town council.
Fourteen days, maybe?
I'm not coming on the seventeenth. I'm just gonna send him with the legal opinion.
We'll, we'll have a vote for seventeen, so.
What? Are you going away again?
Huh?
You're going away again? Where are you going, Rob? You're not.
I'm not going anywhere. I'm not. I promise.
Uh, what do we got for this?
Seven thirty.
Okay, we'll continue to seven thirty on August seventeenth without our Truax.
Thank you.
He's not telling us where he's going.
I'll be right here. My son's coming to town.
Good.
Good to see you, Rob.
Good to see you.
Something you and I will say there.
I'm gonna run into you down in Austin.
No, I'm gonna run you over in Austin.
I'm hiding from both of you.
Hey, you know, you know who's got a better spot, Rob?
We're awesome.
Carl?
No. No.
What's it?
Well, Katie's house. Oh, yeah, what's the name of that, Minutia?
All right, stop. We're on mic. Stop.
It doesn't matter. What a beautiful spot. One of the nicest spots.
It's not mine. It's not mine.
Pick me up, we'll go over. And we'll show you this sign on the lawn. Those dogs.
We're not done.
All right, now we got two more things. Heidi?
Yeah.
We'll be out of here in two seconds.
Don't worry.
Yeah, like what's on the news. Ah, crap. The hillbillies are over.
There's much fun since I have my toenails ripped off.
Seen you a lot of Ravens Nest later than this.
That's all right.
I got a big weekend. I gotta hang out with Mr. Walsh this weekend up in Maine. It's not gonna be good.
Hey, can I come? Can we all come?
Yeah, right.
Good night, thank you.
Good night, good night.
Good night, Rob.
All right, the first thing is. Do we have a? We have a covenant. Oh, we can do the Form F, so.
Form F and the acceptance of.
Yeah, we'll release the Form F. I'll make a motion, it's all in order.
You're accepting the Form F?
Accepting, I'm sorry. Yeah, we'll release that later. Accepting the Form F, that being an order, Kyle?
Yes.
All right, make a motion to accept Form F dated April twentieth, twenty-three?
Second.
That's second, all in favor?
Aye.
It's funny, they never have us sign. I never could figure that out.
Well, we don't sign. On the next one.
And the next one, we accept the private covenant.
Private way covenant?
Right, yeah, private way covenant from Rockwell Realty Two LLC for lot one hundred and wobble shown on the plan entitled Road Improvements Plan Twenty-four. So make a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're all gonna sign this, so. Blue's fine.
I'll get black.
I don't think it matters. Usually they won't want you to, but now with the advent of colored copies, I don't care anymore.
You accept digital signatures.
No.
No.
Wait, not up to.
You're not up to, up to talk to your IT person.
You gotta get, you want a different color, red, green?
I have green. I want green.
You know, they don't have.
I think that's green.
You don't like that.
No, it's black.
We got four colors.
Oh, it is white.
I thought it was green. I make a mess and sort of maybe.
Let's see, this is the twentieth?
Yeah.
Is that mine or yours?
Oh, it's there, so.
Is that no? That's, no, that's the latest before the update that's supposed to be in there. There's an update coming, so don't take it. Oh, don't take. From the, um, spring.
You can use it if you want. You just look in the back.
No, you can take it if you wanna use it, but there's.
You can look in the back if you pass that place. Whoops, that one goes too. All right, and last one, master plan update.
No, 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 no.
What?
You have to, um, endorse the plan.
Oh, I thought it said, I'm reading except subdivision docs, that's all I read.
Is that endorsed already?
I think that's.
Oh, it's Marion Street. It's not. I think you're right. You don't want that.
That's, um, Heidi, I think it's already signed.
I think you're right. Okay, yeah, it's, it's.
It, it's the, uh.
Marion's taking it.
Marion that's gonna have to.
I don't see it here, lady.
Excuse me?
Come in next time.
Katie, I don't see it on the, uh, agenda. That's why I wonder.
See what on the agenda?
What?
You didn't see what on the agenda?
Is this Marinis?
No, Marinis is on next meeting.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, this is, who?
That's Heidi, isn't it?
Uh, Marion, Marion extension. That's Heidi. That's.
That's Heidi.
You guys did that the last.
That's what I'm looking. I'm seeing except docs. Typically, it's just Form F and that crap.
Right, right.
I, I understand, but.
I need that back.
But we held it until, until you get the F P signed.
No, I understand, but my whole point, Kyle, I was just looking. Now, where we signed it?
Yeah, we're good.
Listen, he said that.
Why is it here? Giving it to me?
Do you want me to sign?
No, you can't. You have to be.
Sorry.
No, no, you can't post date anything. So what you used to do, go in the confirmation class. Someone sign me in.
Okay, he's got me owning a mansion, skipping confirmation class.
Can you imagine me showing up?
What else?
In my Speedo? Oh, would that be awesome?
Oh, yeah, that would be awesome.
Yeah, I'm gonna sleep good tonight, Jack.
Awesome's a good word for it, Jack.
I'm sorry, master plan now.
There's not enough, there's not enough scotch.
So I am pleased to, to announce that the, um, the master plan steering committee voted on June twelfth to accept the, the master plan, uh, with the provision that, uh, we were waiting for some updates from, from Judy and her team. So we got those updates, uh, this past Monday, and the plan's been posted to the, um, the, uh,
Thank you.
Steering Committee's webpage. Um, we'll be getting you printed copies of the plan. And, and, um, what we wanna do, what I'll let you know about tonight is that we need to schedule a, a meeting. So working with Judy and to see when she can attend one of our meetings, so, so I'll get back to you hopefully shortly on that. But that would be the.
Who checked? Who, I know she had to do some corrections. Who, did someone check those already?
Um, we've been looking, I've been looking at them, yes. So almost everything I, everything that I know is noted has been corrected. I still will go through more. Um, I know that some of the hyphens are still there, so I don't know. That, that, that might be a further discussion. They're, they're not. They're not really errors, but I know there was some debate about getting rid of all hyphens. But she did get, she did fix the onerous ones that were really, um, or egregious, the usual, yeah. The, the ones that really should have been fixed have been, have been corrected. But all of the, all the changes, um, uh, and, and Katie will remember, some of the big ones were numbering the recommendations. So those all have been numbered, adding the votes to, um, or the dates for the votes. Um, and then fixing a number of problems that people had, had, um, mentioned. And then there were some hypernations that really made no sense and, and those have been corrected. So, um, so we'll be looking at over more, um, but, but I just wanted to let you know that, that the, you know, that the report is in good, is, is in good shape. Um, there's over a hundred recommendations. I think this really captures what your, the, the committee was trying to do. Um, you know, a lot of work went into this, both by Judy and her team and by our steering committee, and I wanna, I wanna thank Katie as vice chair for, for her, or.
The whole group, I think the whole group, yeah.
So. So very, you know, so it's been, it's taken a lot longer than we would have liked to get this final copy done, but we are there now and, uh, you know, like I said, we'll be, we'll be looking it over and, and, um, it is available on the webpage, but we, we wanna get printed copies to the, you know, to the committee members, so that's, that is the next step. So if possible, um, you know, the target would be to look at, is, at one of our, maybe our September, one of our September meetings or?
We don't, we, we don't, I was just gonna say that. We have nothing on September seventh, so it would have to be September twenty-first or into October.
I see, we might not meet on September seventh.
Might not meet.
No, we don't have anything at this point.
I see, yeah.
All who wanna come in and look at master plan, that's it on the, in September first week?
So.
So it'd either be the twenty-first or into October.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, we got, uh, we have, when's the articles?
August.
Oh, that's right, okay. We have zoning articles come up and.
Two zoning articles on August seventeenth.
Okay. Yeah, they're private. I don't know what they are, but.
They are private citizens.
Okay, so if anybody had any questions, that, you know, like I said, I think it's a big step forward. And then, Jack, I wanted to make a motion, um, that we invite Patrick to present his research and work and his thoughts on the MBTA, um, zoning bylaws that the town would need to look at to be in compliance with the MBTA laws. So he, he did present, or will be presenting to the select board. He's got a number of ideas. He's been, you know, he's been doing a lot of work. Um, we've contracted here, or he is, the town has contracted, I believe, with Judy Bear on that as well.
Oh, God, they're doing great.
But, but I think it would be, it would be good for us to have a preview of what he's thinking, and I'm sure he'd like to get our input too, to, to see where direction he's going in. So I, I would recommend that we invite him to present to our.
But the way we're going, we're gonna need that. We'll have so many freaking apartments in town, right?
Well, either way, we have to, we have to change our zoning bylaws to be in compliance with the MBTA law.
My understanding is they hadn't finalized that, have they now?
I believe they have, yeah. There's, there's been, yeah. There's, so there's guidance on what towns have to do and, and we, we are in good shape, but we do need to make some changes. Again, I would defer to him to, to present that to us.
Now, for anybody who wonders why we're getting all these forty Bs, if we thought in safe harbor, they never pulled the billing permit, so we were never in safe harbor, so, and they still haven't.
And now they wanna change it.
Yep. They're not getting any bigger. They just rearrange it. So now with that, because now we get, there's one unpleasant. But Mr. Petrosi's on Burns. We have Mr. Petrosi's on Dowling. Mr. Petrosi's on.
Pinnacle.
Pinnacle. So that's why we're getting inundated with all these. Because they didn't pull a permit. Love it. But anyway, I didn't even know that until a little while ago. How did that happen? So, but we thought we were all set, but I guess not. Anybody have anything else on the, on the agenda?
So, so I work with Patrick and with, um.
Yeah, Patrick, you know, we're, we're not, this isn't part of us. If he's voting for it, it's his baby, all right?
Well, eventually it will be us because we're responsible for the zoning bylaws.
No, we're responsible to have a public hearing.
Well, but in the.
No, it's not. I'm not gonna sit there and do the MBTA. Well, I'm not having some official, a guy who works, at least my opinion, all the time, full-time on this, and it gets dumped on us, who come twice a month. No, this is a town thing, so he should do it. Where does, we don't, we go by the zoning book, but they can put it in very easily.
Yes, but ultimately, the, the, if you look at stature, the planning board is responsible for the zoning bylaws. And even though other organizations, other, other, um, town boards can submit changes, we.
I, I've never found anyone who says we own the book. So why would we, okay, in my own opinion, why am I getting involved? Duchesne's already doing his thing with Judy Barrett, and we're gonna come at the tail end? It's like, you can't even wag the dog at that point, because you haven't got the tail.
No, this is the beginning of it, which is why he wants to, and, and also we, but we do vote on it. We have input into it.
Yeah, but we don't have it. I'm gonna say resources. Who's our person on our end to help us? Nobody.
Well, that doesn't mean that we're not responsible and that doesn't mean that we, as members of the board, shouldn't give our attention to this and to understand, because we're gonna be voting for those articles at some point.
We, yes, we vote as the public entity that helps a public hearing. That's our only responsibility to master general laws. And if you read the book here, I don't know what happened, is planning board, selectman, and zoning board can bring forth articles.
No, and that's true, but, but ultimately, we are responsible for the zoning bylaws. I, I think I will, I will look that up.
Find out where that is. I've never seen that before.
Is it, I mean, if the rules are set, I'm not exactly sure what we're debating. That's where I'm confused.
So Patrick is looking for that to us. I, I, I mean, I, I, I suggested this.
Like, if they're saying we have to do X, Y, Z, and we're only doing X and Y, then shouldn't it be as simple as we're just adding Z?
Well, there's lots of ways you can comply with the MBTA law, and the town has to pick how, what direction it wants to go in. And, you know, we're fortunate to have Patrick has been doing a lot of work on this, looking, and he has some suggestions and he, I think one reason for presenting to us is that we can give in, input, and it would be on the early part of the process. So that we don't want it to be when we go to vote on it, we say, well, we don't like what, what is being.
Come in for a brief discussion.
Okay, I, I love the consultant, the one who can't meet drawn.
Well, that's why I would, no, so the reason, part of the reason, having worked with the consultants, part of the reason it might be a good idea to have him come in for a brief discussion is because a lot of the things that were brought forward to us were more geared towards communities not like us, like more city.
When you cut.
So maybe if we.
I'm not sure what you mean by that, uh.
In the beginning, it was very, um, in the beginning, before we had discussions, a lot of the information that was brought in, like suggestions, they were more geared towards more urban communities.
I, I, I don't remember that at all being something that was an issue or being done. I don't know.
We discussed it. I, I can dig my notes out, but, um, there was, and I'm not saying she was very open to, like, changing things, but it was said at a few of our meetings, people were like, that's, that's not really like us. So it's more for a bigger community. It's more for a.
Speaking about density? I mean, I know there's often pushback about denser housing.
But that's not my point. I don't wanna get into a debate, Phil. What I'm trying to say is.
But you brought it up, so I just wanted to make sure we understand what it is.
So what I'm trying to say is maybe if we had a brief presentation, so that we could all weigh in and say, yeah, that's great, or is this possible? Is that possible? Maybe that wouldn't be a bad idea.
I, I mean, the, the MBTA law is very specific with a town.
That's exactly what I said in the beginning.
Yeah, but, but, but how you get there, it, it, the town has control over how it wants to get there. And he has some very specific recommendations. Um, so for example, the town can get there by doing an overlay district. Or the town could change the dimensional requirements for, um, some of the zoning districts.
Or we can go off the train tracks and never have the MBTA.
I know Patrick was recommending a, a, an overlay district, because that's a simpler way to get there. So, but that's an example of, of some of the decisions. And, and so this does, I mean, I think you're right, Katie. It'd be good to have him come in. This is the early part of the discussion and he's looking for, you know, that's, it's a positive thing.
What? Now, I asked this question. I hope it doesn't go, how are they paying for this, you know?
I think they got, I think Patrick applied and got a grant, but I would defer to him to just to.
Another Kendall Fund grant? Better than.
Yeah, I, I don't think so, Jack, but I know this, the state and, um, I'm not sure which, uh, the Massachusetts plan, you know, the Metropolitan Planning Association. But it, it, really, we should ask him. I don't want to respond to that because I don't, I don't remember exactly what the grant was.
I don't like the way the selectmen are on, they got PD because they don't, it's not their PD to take. And then they question us on how we're paying for our consultant. But, I don't know.
But again, I think it's good that Patrick is doing this work, that it's early on and he's looking at all the different options and coming up to the way that would be best meet our town, um, for meeting the, the, uh, the MBTA requirements, because the requirements are there no matter what, but a lot of ways to get there.
All right, that, that should be it. I make a motion.
So can I work with him to come up with a date and see?
Well, that's yours. You can do what, yeah, we don't, you're not a subcommittee, Phil. You can do, you can say whatever you want.
But I wanna make sure the committee.
No, if you're gonna, if you volunteer, that's fine. I don't have any interest in that time.
Okay, yeah.
I wanna do that stuff. You don't have to ask me my permission. You just, you say I'm doing this. Do we wanna stay another half hour?
No.
Should we adjourn?
We should adjourn.
There we go. I got him awaiting out. Make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.